Items that are not on the agenda for today. So is there any additional things you'd like?
Looks like as far as varieties. But good evening, Fred Daly, 570 South Academy Street. I think I saw it in the newsletter about the. If we're going to go that way, I can drive around Harris Township and find you. If we're going to go that way, I can drive around Harris Township and find you properties that look like that in Harris Township, for sure. So I was just wondering, when it gets to the eight inches? What's the process to the eight inches? What's the process? Is there an ordinance I should read to see is there a complaint that gets filed with them? Do they get fined? Do they have so many days to cut it?
The only thing that's going to happen is if we receive a report or if it's noticed that the grass is too high, we don't drive every road in the township. But if it's complained, do we get a complaint about it or we notice it? Todd would send them an enforcement notice or a notice that they need to mow it. And if it's not taken care of, then we can go ahead and cite property.
Because I remember a year ago, or two, probably two now. But I brought this up and Todd said to me, well, we got instructions from the supervisors. We don't like to enforce these things. You know, we don't like to come down. We're not that type of township where we like to do that unless we get a complaint.
Well, I think, yeah, I think it's rather that we don't like to drive around and peek in everybody's yard. So if, I mean, if Todd's driving around for some specific purpose and he sees a violation, he will certainly take notice of it and take action. Other than that, we do need people to let us know.
Oh, I will.
What you observe.
I will.
I'm shy.
I know you will. I mean, I just don't like the township looking like it is. I just had the thing with Todd about the signs being along all the highways. I think we probably have the cleanest township in the last month. There's no pressure washing signs. There's no lawn signs out there anymore because I picked them up. I'm tired of seeing those things. All right? I mean, if no one here is going to do it, I'll do it. I'll drive around and let you know when the yard's too high. I'll let you know when someone's unregistered camper has been in, sitting in their yard for 20 some years. I think those kind of things need to start being addressed and clean our township up a little bit.
I pick up signs too, Fred.
You can all go get a dog and walk like I do now.
Hopefully, you're walking on the sidewalks.
I'm doing my best.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else that has something that they'd like to bring before us that's not on the agenda? Okay. Let's move on to new agenda items. So according to this Pennsylvania state law, we have to publish our agenda ahead of the meeting. And the only things we can add are things that are emergency items or very minor and maybe for discussion only, but not for vote. So does anybody in the board have something they'd like to add to the agenda? Okay. Township business. Township had a executive session before this meeting. We discussed the real estate matter and a matter of personnel. And these are the kinds of things that we are allowed to talk about in executive session because of sensitivity of those.
Dave, do you have a picture?
Yeah.
It seems that way.
Okay. Okay. Next one up is a happy one. Want to start?
Yeah, so on May 27, 2025, the Bollesburg Fire Company and staff from the University Area Joint Authority worked for about six hours to rescue a dog that was trapped inside of a stormwater drainage pipe in the Willowbrook Development. The dog, an 11-year-old Shiba Inu, was named Blizzard, became trapped after running into the pipe in the late evening. The first responders were assisted by staff from the University Area Joint Authority, which brought a camera and vacuum truck to help with the rescue. There was a considerable amount of sediment in the pipe, which complicated freeing the dog. First responders tried multiple tactics to coax the dog out of the pipe, but were unsuccessful. The dog was eventually rescued after crews cut through the roadway and stormwater pipe, freeing the dog around 1:15 in the morning. Township Maintenance Superintendent Superintendent was also present to help place a plate on the roadway where it had been cut. And tonight, the Board of Supervisors will present representatives from the Bollesburg Fire Company and the University Area Joint Authority with proclamations thanking them for their efforts to rescue Blizzard.
Okay. Would you folks please go forward?
Hold still here.
Yeah. God, I hope it's not a fire.
I wish it were. It looks prepared now.
Okay. A proclamation of Harris Township. Whereas the Harris Township Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize the. I'm going to start with the other one. I'm sorry. Whereas the Harris Township Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize the Bollesburg Fire Company for their efforts in a recent animal rescue operation. And whereas on May 27, 2025, Bollesburg Fire Company responded to an urgent call involving an 11-year-old Shiba Inu named Blizzard, who'd become a trap in a stormwater pipe in the Willowbrook Development. And whereas their professionalism, determination, and compassion, the firefighters worked tirelessly to locate, reach, and safely extract Blizzard from the pipe despite challenging conditions and limited space. Whereas their actions not only saved the life of a beloved pet, but also brought comfort and joy to Blizzard's family. And whereas Chief Fan Winter, Assistant Chief Nate Frye, Captain Jonathan Felon, firefighter Ally Bear, firefighter Peter Corby, and firefighter Casey Wyatt were instrumental in rescuing Blizzard. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Harris Township Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize Bollesburg Fire Company for their quick response and their actions in rescuing Blizzard. Very grateful to have highly qualified and well-trained first responders in the area. Dated this ninth day of June, 2025.
Got it?
Yep.
And you did my other.
Thank you for all you do.
Wow.
I've got to eat a skinny ear. Okay. We have representatives from the University Joint Authority here. Okay. A proclamation of Harris Township. Whereas Harris Township Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize the University Area Joint Authority for their efforts in a recent animal rescue operation. And whereas on May 27, 2025, Bollesburg Fire Company requested assistance from the University Area Joint Authority after an 11-year-old Shibu Inu named Blizzard became trapped in a stormwater pipe in the Willowbrook Development. And whereas the dedicated employees of the University Joint Authority responded swiftly and professionally, volunteering their expertise, equipment, and persistence to locate and assist with extracting Blizzard from the stormwater pipe. And whereas their actions brought relief to Blizzard's family and highlighted the often unseen contribution of public utility workers in times of need. And whereas Collection System Superintendent Darren Brown, Assistant Superintendents Doug Corman and Troy Remy provided valued assistance in rescuing Blizzard. Therefore, now be resolved, the Harris Township Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize the University Area Joint Authority for their outstanding efforts in the rescue of Blizzard and for their continued service to the residents of Harris Township. Dated this ninth day of June, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. It's always good to have items like that on the agenda. Okay.
Next, we have recognition of Jenny Evans, a former member of the Parks and Recreation Committee and Bruce Lord's late wife, unfortunately. Jenny Evans, who served on the Harris Township Parks and Recreation Committee, passed away on April 13, April 3 at the age of 63. Ms. Evans served on the Parks and Recreation Committee from 2020 to 2024, where she helped shape recreational opportunities in the township that support the well-being of residents. Ms. Evans previously serves as the chairperson for the Bollesburg Hometown Christmas Committee, where she helped contribute to the success of the event, which draws families and visitors to the village each year. The board wishes to recognize her commitment to Harris Township and express their condolences to her family, friends, and colleagues.
Thank you. We also have recognition here of Ronald Buckaloo, former Planning Commission member. Ronald Buckaloo, who served on the Harris Township Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board, passed away on May 22 at the age of 88. Mr. Buckaloo served on the Planning Commission from 1996 to 2016, offering invaluable contributions that have helped shape the development and planning of the township. In addition to his 20 years of service on the Planning Commission, Mr. Buckaloo also served on the Zoning Hearing Board and represented Harris Township on the Center Region Planning Commission and the Center County Metropolitan Planning Organization. Board wishes to recognize his contribution to Harris Township and express their condolences to his family, friends, and colleagues. Next up, Sklo Library.
We've got a slide deck coming up, but perfect. So while he's pulling that up, I'll introduce myself. I'm Harmony Schmidt Bauer. For those of you who don't know me, I am the Harris Township representative to the Sklo Center Region Library Board. And then with me today, I have Alisa Collins, who is our library director. So she can help fill in any gaps, make sure, you know, I'm giving accurate information. She helped collaborate on this presentation as well and, of course, answer any questions that I can't answer. So let's hop right in here. You know, obviously, I just want to emphasize that Harris Township loves Sklo. I have a number of statistics up here on the board highlighting that our physical material circulation as of the end of May, so these stats were pulled early June, is about on par with where we would be, would have been around this time last year, around 14,000 physical material circulation for this year so far. And we totaled around 36,000 last year total for 2024. The counts of our ebook circulation and e-audiobook circulation are for the total of the entire library so far for beginning of the year up through all of May. And as you can see, you know, we are really, really leaning into all of a number of our e-resources here, which is, you know, increasingly important just from an access standpoint. But of course, our physical material circulation, you know, there's nothing like going into the library. Actual monetary contribution around $7,000 is around that 7% of the total contribution this year for 2025 for Center Gives, which interestingly enough is right on par with our book, your English, book your English teacher wanted you to read. And so that really is what fostered my love of reading growing up, was a summer reading program at my local library. And then also, you know, just from an academic standpoint, this reading program is essential to prevent what is a new term I learned called the summer slide. And so really, you know, students can lose almost 20% of their reading gains over the summer because they're not being forced to read every day. And so these programs where you can, you know, make reading fun, you're reading, you know, trying to read a little bit every day as part of, you know, certain quests and getting points and there's prizes and all different kinds of motivations to really help incentivize students to want to read over the summer. And also, you know, looking out in this room, this is not just for kids. There are benefits to reading. There's a teen and adult reading program as well. We have some physical copies of both the children's and teen and adults' reading program calendars here available to you if you'd like to pick one up. Mark has those, you know, some time today. And, you know, the benefits for adults include things like cognitive engagement, of course, increased lifespan. I'll take anything that'll help me live a little, live a little bit longer. So definitely, you know, you can sign up for this program still through the end of the summer. And then I know a lot of the other thing that's really top of mind for folks right now is the executive order that President Trump issued on March. First one coming up here is Moana 2. Other movies coming up are like Inside Out 2, Wish.
Like resources. And those really have a huge variety in terms of how expensive they are. The audiobook that you may get on Amazon may cost you maybe $10. That same audiobook that might be a bestseller might be costing us between $100 and $120, $150. So, you know, we're trying to do the best we can to utilize our resources to make sure we make as many electronic resources available as possible with the understanding that the physical circulation is still, that's where it's at. That's our number one circulation of items. It's all the physical things that we have to offer.
For 2026, you need to hit 100,000.
We got it. Yep. We got to keep, keep moving forward on it, keep moving forward. And I always look at each of those donations that we receive, both through Center Gives, our Fall Fun Drive, and then you, you can see, we do, we do small things as well. We do the bingo and we do all sorts, the Book Fest, all these sort of other smaller things. All of those things are just, you know, little votes from everybody that they believe in the services that their public library has for them and that they give according to what their means are, whatever those means may be, which a lot of small donations equal a lot of wonderful materials for all of our community.
Thanks, Susan.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Up next, CADA update and Resolution 25-09, adopting the CADA local match share.
So CADA's member municipalities are required to provide local matching. Funds related to financial assistance provided by the state. Based upon the updated local match share formula that was developed in 2024, Harris Township pays 6.32% of the proposed local match. Resolution for the township's local matches included with the agenda. Based upon the proposed local match, the township will pay $46,197 in operating funds and $4,939 in capital funds. Margie Bowle, Harris Township's representative to the CADA board and other members of CADA staff are present tonight to provide an update on CADA's service in the township and the region. And I'm going to go ahead and pull up that presentation for Mr. Rishel.
Good evening. Nice to have you here. I'll try to match your enthusiasm. I'm not sure I can. I'm Dave Rishel. I'm the CEO, Executive Director of CADA. And with me also is Derek Sherman behind the column. He's our chief operating officer and Margie's there as well. So I want to talk with you a little bit about what's been going on at CADA over the past year and answer any questions you may have about the service. Next slide. So this is a kind of a overall snapshot of our budget for the coming year. Our budget's coming in really right around $29 million. Now, this is I kind of what I like to call a best case, worst case budget. It's best case in that we are, we have many plans that we would like to do and people we'd like to hire. So if we do absolutely everything, this is what it's going to cost. That's the worst case. Typically, over the last several years, we've come in about 10 to 15% below that in terms of actual spending. So although you can see that there is a budget deficit here of just about $2.1 million, if we actually achieve this budget, we have some reserves that we can use to cover that, but we don't expect that we will achieve that. Our subsidies from the state and federal government do about 60% of our budget. And the rest of the budget is covered by your match, by fairs and by contracted services, primarily with Penn State University. Penn State does pay local match, but we also operate, as you probably know, three routes on the campus. And because we operate with our doors open and we don't charge any fares and that's available to the general public, Penn State subsidizes us about $3 million for that service. So they, and they've been increasing their contribution over the last three years. So that's our budget in a snapshot. Next slide, please. So a few highlights from the budget. One of the things that we're asking for this year is a fare increase. We're proposing a fare increase. Our current fare is $2.20 cash fare at the door. We haven't raised our fare since 2020. And our increase that we're asking for is a 14% increase. And our board is given indication that they're going to approve this. The inflation between 2020 and now has been 21.9%, almost 22%. So you can see, we're really just not even keeping up with inflation, but we, it's just time for us to, to raise our fares because costs are going up. Especially recently, we've been having a lot of supplier costs going up because of tariffs. So we're, you know, trying to keep up. This is only going to apply to our big bus and our CADA GO services, CADA Ride, which is our paratransit for folks with disabilities. We had a fair increase for that in 2023. This fair increase will not impact that service. A few other highlights, our fixed route ridership, our big bus ridership for the year is up 3.5%. And a lot of that's in our big kind of student residential corridors, Wapalani Drive, Martin Street, big increases there. Also, big increases on the Atherton Connector and the College Connector services. So those are growing significantly. We've been able to negotiate a 6% increase with our apartment complexes. You may know that we have pass agreements with most of the big apartment complexes in town. That's a big revenue source for us. They've agreed to increase their fees 6%. And Penn State is in the process of agreeing to a 6% increase for their contract with us. I say in the process because we're just as close to finishing negotiations. Next slide. Some service changes that we're proposing in the coming year. We're going to be introducing some, what we've introduced for the summer service, two new trial routes, one of which we hope will continue. Next slide, I'll show you what these are. The first one, we're calling the UP Route, the University Parkway Route. This is a route that comes from downtown State College out to Westerly Parkway and then loops around Wapalani all the way down the Parkway to University Drive, back up to the campus and around. That's an area of this, of the community that we haven't had fixed route service for a long time. So we're trying this out this summer to see how it's working operationally. We ran a special summer route last year, and this is already having much higher ridership than last year's summer routes. So we're very excited. If we have the personnel, our intention is to keep running this route permanently as a new fixed route. And this will be the first new service CADA has been able to add since before the pandemic. Next slide. Another route that we're doing is the HV, the Happy Valley Route. This is out in the Patent Township area through toftrees and such. This is really some additional service on the weekends, a combination of a few routes out there. Next slide. Something that we run every summer, but we're doing differently this summer, is we have a youth campaign, a youth pass program. Anybody under 18 is eligible for one of these passes. And they normally cost, I forget what they were, 30 bucks or something like that. But this year, they are free because we would like to bring people into the system. And if they start riding when they're young, they learn how to ride the buses and hopefully they stay riding the buses. And we have about eight times more passes already that we've given out than we've sold in the past. So we're super happy about this, going very well. You can ride all summer on any of our services for free with one of these passes. Next slide. Our CADA Ride Service, this is our paratransit service for passengers with disabilities. It's a couple statistics more relevant to your township. We did 1,300 rides last year and our on-time performance was almost 97%. So that service is running well over the past year. Next slide. CADA GO Service, which is the service that serves your township. We did just over 13,000 trips last year. That generally runs at 96% plus on-time performance. And the met demand rate, that means that when people want to. when people want to ride, they can get a ride when they want it. That's almost 99%. Rider acceptance rate is the people accept the first trip that they're given, so they're happy with what they're offered, because you put in your request, and the system tells you when we can come pick you up. People spend about 12 minutes on the bus, and they're picked up usually within about 15 minutes of making their request. And almost half of these rides are shared rides, which really helps us run more efficiently. So we're not running just one person in a bus. We stop and pick somebody else up on the way. That's what makes the service much more cost effective. Next slide. And to just give you an idea for Harris Township, sort of when people are riding, this is kind of an odd graph, but the higher the column, this is total rides for January to May in 2025. So you can see people ride a lot in the morning peak, and then a little bit early afternoon, but really pretty steady service all day out in this area. Service is really growing. Actually, the service in Harris Township is up 6%, a little more than 6% over last year. So where our entire system has grown 3%, service out here has grown 6%. So very popular. Next slide. And a breakdown of what people are using CADA Go for in Harris Township. 41% was 42% personal, about 20% employment, 20% education, and then other, and about 3% medical trips. So quite a wide variety of trips people are using. Our customer satisfaction here, we're pretty happy with. This is if you've ever used Lyft or Uber, you can rate the ride when you're done. So we're consistently getting 4.9 to 5 ratings from the passengers in this area who are using the service. So happy to keep that up. Next slide. And I want to talk to you a little about a service expansion that we're planning for this year. This is the current service area in Harris Township, kind of the Bolzberg area. Remember last year, we extended service out in this area and out 322. So that's currently where the service is. Next slide. What we're going to be doing this year is expanding our CADA Go service. Throughout the year, our goal is to expand it so anyone living in the center region will have access to CADA Go. The area with no shading in the middle, that represents our fixed route bus system. And the area that's shaded gray are the areas kind of more than 3/4 of a mile outside of that system where people are unlikely to, to walk and ride a bus. So if you live anywhere in the gray area, you're going to have access to CADA Go. And you can see with Harris Township, it's the entire township. So we'll be expanding that this year. So no matter where you live in Harris, you'll eventually have access to CADA Go. And of course, still includes free transfers to the bus. Next slide. We're also working on some experimentation so that we can go further with CADA Go. Right now, the CADA Go service area is divided into regions. Sometimes you have to transfer. We're looking to see if we can figure out ways to not require you to transfer between Lamont and Howserville. So that's going to be a focus of experimentation in this coming year. Next slide. Let's see. We did implement a new app that people are using. You use a handheld app. You could also call, but use a handheld app to request these rides. It's a ride, an app called Via. It's really been popular with passengers who are using it, much better than the other one that we were using. I've kind of already gone over most of those statistics. So I'll just jump right to the Beeline. Well, that's okay. The Beeline service is a service that we created for Benner Township in Bellefonte last year. Spring Township, as you may remember, left the CADA system, so only Bellefonte and Benner were remaining, but they did not want to increase the amount of money they were paying for service. So we actually created an entirely new service, a new on-demand service for them called the Beeline. That's run successfully over this past year, but Bellefonte has, both Bellefonte and Benner have decided to leave the CADA system entirely. So this service will be ending on June 30, 2025. If residents in Harris Township still wish to go to Bellefonte for any kind of county business, we're currently working on a kind of a reimbursement arrangement with the county transportation system. So you'll still be able to make that ride. So we're kind of working on alternatives to that. We, we're working with the county. Actually, CADA is going to be giving two buses to the county so they can handle this increased demand, people who are, were no longer transporting. But we're still waiting for Bellefonte to work out the details of how the service is going to work, because they're contracting with the county, and we're waiting to hear so we can inform our passengers. So it's going to be a busy month for us. Next slide. A few other things, highlights of the year. We are 50 this year. We had a whole bunch of different celebrations. It was fun to turn 50. We're updating our fare system. At the end of this summer, we're going to be taking out the fare boxes from all our buses and replacing them with digital readers. You'll still be able to pay cash, but if you're paying with any kind of a pass, it'll be a new kind of a pass. It's a visual scan. You could also use a smartphone for a visual scan. We're also going to be phasing out tokens. Tokens will still be good. You can still use them. But we're going to be phasing them out. And by September to October, you'll also be able to pay with a credit card on the bus. So it'll be just like getting gas at Sheetz. You just tap your credit card when you board, and you can ride. So you don't need, need to buy a ticket. We negotiated a new labor contract over the past year with minimal budget impact. Yeah, a few other little things there. We'll just skip ahead. A few other things. We are looking at a multi-year program to improve our bus stops. You may have noticed in the center region that we replaced all of our bus stop signs over the past year. We're going to be adding to those bus stop signs. And we also have some PennDOT engineers that have been spending time in the center region, visiting every single one of our bus stops, documenting the stops, taking measurements to look where we need to make upgrades and improvements. And we're going to be looking at where the ridership is on those stops and strategically upgrading the really busy stops. Some new buses added to our system this year. Driver recruitment is encouraging, but it's still an issue. It still is a concern. There are additional services we'd like to run, and we've not been able to because of driver recruitment. So that's, it's a hill we're still trying to climb. Couple new things we're looking at is we're exploring on-demand service to the airport. It would be similar to the CADA Go type service. CADA has tried over the years to run scheduled service to the airport, and every time the airline schedule changed, then the bus schedule didn't work. So we're going to try this instead this year. We're working with the airport authority. We're also working with the MPO and talking to Amtrak about on-demand service to Tyrone and Lewis Town rail stations. So that's going to be a project for the year as well. We'd like to, to get something like that in place if we can. And we're also talking with the borough and the university to try to have a better consolidated transfer site in the downtown area. We do, College and Allen is now our big transfer center, but that's a terrible place. There's traffic. The sidewalks are not a good place. So we'd like to locate that somewhere where passengers have more room and, you know, where you can have other services. So that's something that's going to be talked about in the coming year. Next. And that's it. That brings us to, as Mark was saying, our request to you tonight for local match. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
CADA Go and CADA Ride are at the door. Pick up?
Yes.
What kind of advance notice you need to give that?
CADA Ride is the day before. You have to make a telephone call for that. CADA Go is immediate. You can make a request on a smartphone, and as soon as there's a vehicle available, it will come to pick you up.
Okay.
And they're operated using the same fleet. We're increasingly kind of mixing those together as much as we can. It's much more cost effective.
Those are the ones that are contracted to another
Yes.
company?
Yes, we have a contractor that does both of those services. They operate our buses, but the employees are contracted.
So we're, we're increasing about 4,000 between '25, '26?
Yes.
42 to 46.
I'd like to say that we're going to be getting a lot more money from the state and federal governments, but that's not the case. PennDOT has told us. We don't know what we're yet getting from PennDOT, but the way the state law works, they can't give us less than they gave us last year. But they've told us to plan for no increase at all. So that's what we're planning for. And I would like to give CADA staff credit. We're one of the few, if not possibly the only transit system in the Commonwealth that is not facing a catastrophic budget deficit. Our fiscal situation is very solid. And if we got no increases from the state, we can continue operating at these levels for at least a decade. So, you know, we take fiscal responsibility very seriously here, and we operate a good system. We're, we're still the most cost-effective transit system in the state.
Any particular marketing you're doing to Harris Township to get more people to get to the transfer point there?
I don't know if it's particular to Harris Township, but we do have ongoing marketing of CADA Go.
Nothing targeting like Liberty Hill or the gates or subdivisions in the township?
I'll get back to you on that, because we may have some, some events or some campaigns planned in the coming year. We do have a pretty big marketing plan in the coming year for this service expansion.
I think Liberty Hill would be a pretty nice target.
It's one of the areas where we get a lot of rides now.
And then Rocky Bridge going out?
Yes.
Little book across the street?
In fact, we had, I didn't have it ready in time to put in the slide deck, but I'll send you what we call a heat map. Have you ever seen that concept? You basically have colors on the map that show you where the busiest trip places are. It's very interesting. I'll, I'll send it to you, Mark, and you can distribute it. It shows last year and this year, you know, how it's increased. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
I think I got to clap for the next one. Okay. Oh, no, we have to, yes, I need a motion.
Well, I'll move to approve Resolution 25-09, approving the local match for the 2025, 2026 CADA budget.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Okay, the next item is a discussion item on short-term rental regulations update.
Over the past month, staff has continued to work on researching and preparing a framework for short-term rental ordinance for the township. In addition to working on the regulations, staff also collected information on existing short-term rentals in the township to get a better understanding of the number and occupancy status of these units. So tonight, I'm going to be providing the board with a presentation that has an overview of our findings related to the existing short-term rental landscape here in the township, and then also an overview of the updated ordinance framework with the requests for some feedback from the board on how you'd like us to proceed with drafting these regulations. So I will go ahead and share my screen and start this presentation here. One second. All right. So as I mentioned, what we did was we tried to get an understanding of the number of short-term rentals that exist here in the township today. That was done by looking at a couple of different websites, primarily Airbnb, VRBO, and Rent Like a Champion, looking at the properties that were listed on there and identifying them, and just collecting some basic data on whether or not the owner's address matched that of the property itself. I'm not saying that everything we collect is 100% accurate in terms of owner occupancy or not, but that was the gauge we used to try to determine whether or not the owner likely lived at the property. So I will point out that we identified 88 properties in total. These did not include any farm stays, which are a separate use that are permitted in our agricultural districts, bed and breakfasts, which are a different use that's defined by our zoning ordinance, or hotels and motels. So these would be homes primarily that are listed on those websites that I mentioned earlier. Of those 88 properties, about 75% of them are located in the single-family residential zoning district. The remainder are spread throughout our rural districts, the multifamily residential district, the village, and village commercial district. Of those properties that we identified, the vast majority, 71 of them, is a house, an entire house that you would be renting. There were 14 that we defined as a unit. This would be sort of like a suite where you might have a separate, it might be two units on the property. Maybe they have an accessory apartment, or they have a basement apartment, and you're renting one of the units while the other unit is occupied by someone else. It could also be, as I mentioned, a suite, sort of like a couple of bedrooms with a bathroom, but probably no kitchen facilities. There were two properties in particular where you were just renting a room from probably the owner living on site. And then we had one camper that's being rented as a short-term rental. So. And this is a map showing where these properties are located throughout the township along with the, what we approximate or what we assume the occupancy status is. So as you can see, these are spread throughout the township, the majority of which, though, are in our neighborhoods. That's where they're certainly concentrated. So this was just some information we thought would be important to try to get a better understanding of what the current landscape is for these types of rentals. I know last, or back in April, I had mentioned, and I thought there was about 50. Obviously, I was wrong by quite a number, because I found 88 in total. But nonetheless, I wanted to give you that data just to, to give you a better understanding of maybe the number that we have here in the township. So next thing I'm going to do is just briefly go through this rental ordinance framework that we worked on since April. And in April, we had talked about a few of these things. We've gone on to refine them a bit more, look at some examples of what other municipalities have done, and put together some ideas of how, how this ordinance could be structured here in the township. So our purpose in putting this together would be to ensure safety first and foremost, and also to minimize impacts to neighborhoods. It would apply to short-term rentals as defined by the ordinance. As I mentioned earlier, it wouldn't include things like farm stays or actual bed and breakfasts that are different units or uses altogether. A permit would be required and be for a calendar year with each unit that is being rented requiring a separate permit. All units would need to have a rental housing permit for, from the Center Region Code Administration. This would ensure that, that they meet the basic life safety requirements that are established in our property maintenance code. And then finally, there'd be an application that would include requirements such as a scale drawing of the floor, floor plan of the property, location of all street parking spaces, proof of septic suitability, if it has an on-lot septic system, as well as certificate of liability insurance. As far as the requirements go, there wouldn't be no more than two short-term rental units per property. We do have properties here in the township where there are three units on them, and two of them are being used as a short-term rental. So I think that was kind of the max limit that we saw from examples in other ordinances was limiting it to no more than two. Guest vehicles would be limited to the number of off-street spaces available with no permitted parking on the street. Occupancy would be limited to a maximum established through the rental housing permit. And then restrictions and contact information would be, need to be posted in the unit. So if there's a problem with, with the property, they can get ahold of the owner, they can get ahold of the person in charge, something that's going to give them some information about what they're allowed to do on the property, what they're not allowed to do, and if they have a problem, who they can get in touch with. So the next two slides are going to be the things that we're going to be looking for feedback on from the board. Based on comments we received from the board and from, you know, individually from board members, staff went ahead and put together this part of the framework on occupancy requirements. So what we've heard in terms of concerns and how that could most easily be addressed would be requiring that short-term rentals must be owner occupied unless they're located in a commercial or an industrial zoning district. So the way we've written that up in the framework would be someone needs to reside on the property for at least eight months a year. That would be the definition of owner occupancy. There would be, that, that certainly could be changed if the board felt it should be a different number. Proof of owner occupancy would be required at the time of application as well as annual renewal. There would be an exemption provision to allow for temporary absences. So someone who has a military deployment, work relocation, sabbatical, something of that nature. And what I'd point out to the board is that, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a number of existing units that would not meet this requirement. So that's something we would be looking for feedback on as well. If we have this owner occupancy requirement, how would you want us to address the existing units that do not meet that? Certainly, from our discussions with our solicitor, it's not something that has to be incorporated in the ordinance, but there are municipalities that do have provisions to address existing units or existing rentals that were in place before the ordinance was adopted. And then the next thing we'd be asking for feedback on is overall rental limitations. So how often can the property be rented? Short-term rentals would, for the framework, would be allowed to operate in increments of 29 consecutive nights or less. But would the board want to also have a, a limitation on the number of cumulative rental nights per year? This is something that we see in a lot of other ordinances, just as a means of trying to limit the overall impact to the neighborhoods, making it where it doesn't lose its character as a single-family home. We would need to obviously have a number from the board if you wanted to include that, of how many cumulative nights per year you'd want to have it limited to. The township would also need to use some type of aggregating service to track compliance with that. And property owners could also be required to provide rental records during the prior year whenever they come in for their annual renewal. So that's an overview of the framework that we prepared and provided to the board. Again, we're looking for feedback, particularly on these last two slides. Certainly, if there was anything on the prior slides in the framework that you were provided with, we'd love to hear that, too. Certainly, if there was anything on the prior slides in the framework that you were provided with, we'd love to hear that too. But those are the questions that we would really need to have answered for us to be able to move forward with actually putting together a draft ordinance for you. Uh, with that, I will stop sharing my screen and...
Um, here's how I would like to proceed. We'll open this up to comments from the public. I know most of you, I don't, maybe none of you have seen this document here. It's pretty comprehensive. It does have a bunch of questions for us to yet decide upon. But, um, so if you come up with a comment, and maybe Mark can address that, how it is, it is contained or, or in, in this document. One thing I will ask is, please, let's not get up and say the same thing the person before you said. Let's kind of try to get this, we're going to be here a while. We'll, we'll take as much time as we have to, to listen to what people have to say. Okay, but let's, let's help me move it along. So, first one up, please. Yep.
Something that wasn't...
Name?
Um, Mike Gabrosik. I live in Willowbrook, which has multiple rentals. I don't know if you picked them all up on your slide. But we have empty houses in our neighborhood that are rented football weekends or just occasionally here and there, which sort of takes away some of the family-type feel for the neighborhood. We're not getting, uh, you know, families moving in or even elderly people retiring. And I don't know if it's here, but the clustering, I'm assuming, is probably not in, uh, Aspen Heights or those areas. It's in the neighborhoods that have houses that are probably less than four-hundred thousand in that area. And that's a type of neighborhood you probably want to keep. So it'd be good to have a limit per neighborhood or square foot would be, would be a, a good thing to, you know, the area of a, a, a group of houses so that we don't get clusters of rentals all in the same place and just wreck a neighborhood. That's not in there. And you had mentioned that, uh, off-street parking, if you take a look at one of the rentals in our neighborhood, there's over ten cars on the grass in this one. They're all off the street, so there probably needs to be something added to...
There were eleven, I can't remember.
There were eleven. Something needs to be added to limit it more than just off-street parking. Off-street parking that is, you know...
This is what it looked like. We just happen to be walking. It's a very walking, friendly neighborhood, and it's nothing but cars. They're all off-street, but this is what we got. I just happen to have my phone, did you? Well, they're all off-street. Uh, sorry, I'm, I'm, my name is Sue Trainor, and I live in Willowbrook, fairly near this house. Everything's off-street, but it's a mess, you know? And it's not like having a graduation party. Nobody complains about those things. It's not like having, you know, your friends over for a night party. Because what people in neighborhood will say is, "We're, we're having a graduation party. It's going to be a lot of cars. We apologize in advance. Please bear with us. It's a three-hour party." That's great, but this is like day-and-night kind of stuff, and this is off-street.
Do you want to...
What, in the microphone?
Oh, I know. Sorry. Well, that, that's really, that's really all I need is, you know, it, we, Mike and I were walking and took a look at that and said, "Whoa, well, they got them all off-street." But I, I'm not sure that that's the intention of it, that every blade of grass is covered by a vehicle. And then when you're looking at eleven vehicles, if there's one person driving each vehicle, and you only have one person from that vehicle in that property, then there's eleven people in that property. But dollars to donuts, there's, each car or SUV or whatever it was had more than one person. So how many people were renting that? You know, it's, that's a lot of people. Yeah.
I'll just address real quick as far as how the ordinance would, you know, at least address a few of these concerns. First and foremost, when it comes to the concern about more of these rentals being established, if owner occupancy is a requirement, it would be something where it wouldn't be a vacant home that could be used as a rental. It would have to be someone living there as an owner occupant, as defined by the ordinance. And if they're, depending on how the board handles existing units, that may or may not be that these ones that are there are allowed to stay. But nonetheless, anything moving forward would have to comply with this ordinance, uh, no matter what, which would ensure you wouldn't have just vacant homes being established. So that was part of the reason by including that was to address some of those comments. What I'll say in terms of the off-street parking, it wouldn't be, can you get the cars off of the road and therefore it's off the street? There actually would be definitions in the ordinance about how you can count off-street spaces. They have to be paved, either concrete, asphalt. They couldn't just be parked all over the grass. A lot of that is going to be dealt with through an enforcement, uh, part of the code, where we're going to have to enforce on these things if we're getting complaints that there's a home that has too many occupants in it or cars that are parked illegally based on what the ordinance is. That's where we would follow up with those matters, so that, that's really the important part. I'll also note where, you know, there's a comment made about the number of people that were in the home. That was the other reason why we included that restriction of whatever the, the rental permit says the maximum occupancy is. I think the home that they're referring to, if I remember it right, is on Airbnb is allowing up to sixteen people, and I believe it's a four-bedroom home. I don't know what code would come back and say is acceptable occupancy, but that was what they're marketing the property as, is sixteen.
My name's Ken Kleinschmuster. I also live in Willowbrook. But I, together with our son, we own a property in State College Borough. Uh, it's a three-bedroom house and a apartment below, and we Airbnb his three-bedroom house, and he comes home and stays with us. So I'm used to what the Borough does for their short-term rental. Just this past year, we had to pass inspection as a rental property, you know, pure and simple. So we had to do a few upgrades to the house, put a vent in the powder room and so forth. I, I think it's a great, I like your framework a lot. I think, uh, residency ownership should be required. Because, uh, right now, I live in Willowbrook, and there's a house across that's almost vacant all the time. It's an, I think it's an Airbnb. It's one of your non-owner-occupied. And it's, first of all, it's a waste of housing. And, and more and more across the country, investors are buying up single-family homes and renting them out. And I don't think this is good for our economy. It's good, it's not good for homeowners. It's not good for young people looking to buy a house. So I think requiring, uh, owner occupancy is essential. In terms of nights per year, we had, the Borough has a limit of a hundred and twenty. That's way more than we do. We maybe do thirty, thirty nights a year. Sixty or ninety, I think, would be fine. I'm, I'm also active in a, uh, short-term Airbnb group in the area that looks at advocacy for that, and I think it's a good thing. For one thing, uh, it helps us keep that property, uh, helps us pay the bills on that property. Our son lives there, so he's an owner that lives there. Uh, but without that additional income, it would, he would have a hard time paying the mortgage. Air, uh, short-term rentals usually keep up their property pretty well because they want to be attractive, uh, to potential renters. Uh, and that's, and they fix it up. And also, if you have to meet the rental permit requirements, you, uh, they're pretty strict. Uh, the cog is pretty strict. And, uh, so, uh, that, that's, I think, my two cents. I would like to have, uh, owner occupied, uh, and I like the twenty, twenty-nine consecutive nights or less. That's a good idea to, to have some break. Thank you.
Nothing to add for that? Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm Win Hawk, uh, resident here in Township for fifty years, and I live on Blue Spring Lane. And I can tell you, over the fifty years now, and particularly in recent years, the flavor, the complexion of Harris Township is cha-changing. What used to be strictly family-oriented is now changing. We're finding, right in my neighborhood, in the last year, there were, there's two properties right now that have gone Airbnb, and I suspect there's going to be another one. There's one Catta corner from us that's on, on Main Street, and I'm not going to give you a number, but it's on Main Street. It's been sitting idle for the better part of the, I'll say, the last year since the person bought it at auction. The lawn used to be cut in back. Well, now, I'm thinking of getting a baler. It's that long. You could make hay. And one of the concerns I have is the butts up more or less to the preserve, where we're going to get a lot more rodents, we're going to get a lot more vermin, we'll probably get a lot more snakes. Now, I don't mind snakes. I like them, but I really don't want them in, like, sitting in my doorstep. The point is, these abandoned homes, and I'll call them abandoned because some of them are sitting for weeks, months at a time, and they're, no one's using them. There's something wrong there about that. That is not a healthy environment for this township. Harris Township is a special place. It's a special place to live. It, it has, it has things that no one else has. And I just think we're going in the wrong direction when we allow these homes to be abandoned for long periods of time with no one in them, and you can see sort of the decay taking place. It may only be the lawn. It may be the back of the house. It doesn't face the front, but it's a problem. I think it's a problem, and I think Harris Township is losing something. It's losing a special place in this state by allowing unregulated properties. I, at least, they should have a permit. Keep in mind, an Airbnb or something comparable is a business. You operate Duffy's. You have to pay some kind of a business permit. Why not an Airbnb? That's a business. They're there to make money. And I, the gentleman that talked about that, he, I think he would say, "That's not an unreasonable request." And I appreciate that. I really do. I'll leave it at that. I just want to give you my opinion about, I don't want to see Harris Township change. I, I wish it could stay the same as it did fifty years ago. I realize that can't be. Danny, you know that. But at any rate, I just want to say that let's keep Harris Township a special place to live.
Go ahead. I'll just mention that I did not go over it tonight as part of the framework. Back in April, we did talk about the enforcement mechanism, and kind of what Mr. Hawk was speaking about here is, you know, if we have issues where somebody's not mowing their lawn on their Airbnb or VRBO property, their short-term rental, we will be having that as part of the ordinance where they could potentially lose their license uh, if they're not keeping up on the property. That's an important component of this to make sure that these properties are complying, and that if they don't, they could potentially lose that right to do that.
I'm going to suggest that we, um, in our next newsletter, put a link to this document here. I think you'll find this document covers most of what we've been hearing pretty well. It's got, you'll find on, on our copies, uh, there, there's things that are highlighted in yellow where, where staff is suggesting, "Okay, these are some decisions you need to make." There's forty-five days in the year or a hundred and twenty days in the year, and those kinds of things. So it's, it's a work in progress, but I think, you know, particularly the owner-occupied part is going to address a lot of it and the code enforcement. Please.
Martin McGann. I don't live in Willowbrook. While I was sitting here, it occurred to me that if you were going to set limits on how many nights a facility can be rented, you might want to change the name of this from short-term rental, which I think implies a transactional fee to short-term occupancy. Because what I can see happening is that somebody gets to forty-five nights, and they want to have some of their, somebody come in, they're going to make an agreement under the table. We're just going to say that you're my friends and you're coming here, and we're not, we're not renting it to you. You're just using it. And then there might be some, some, something that happens later on where a transaction occurs, but it's not actually part of a rental document. So I think, um, maybe thinking about the definition of rental versus occupancy might be something that would further limit how often people can stay there, whether they are renting it or just occupying it.
Please.
Hi, my name's Jessica Keel, and I have an Airbnb that I live in. And, um, these are very valid opinions. The owner occupancy makes a ton of sense. Um, I just wanted to say, I've been doing this for about twelve years, because we have a cabin out in Huntington County that I started with. And it's a great way for me to help support my family, and as the gentleman from Catta said, expenses have gone up a lot lately, and we have four kids. And I feel that I do good for this community by having an Airbnb, because I get families that are coming back for family reunions. I get people that are coming for the bike race, and they wanted to be close to Bull City. And Airbnb has such strict standards. You get reviewed as a host, and then you have to review the guest. And we pride ourselves on having really high scores. And if you don't, you get bad reviews. And also Airbnb offers a, um, like a million-dollar insurance policy, I believe, that kind of takes the stress out of having someone in my home. But I have been doing this for about twelve years now, and I've never had a bad guest. I mean, someone took a pillow once. But mostly people love being here and come for the Grange Fair. They come for football. And being able to have people come and help, when our furnace went out, that was a big deal, to be able to have that little bit of extra money. So I appreciate all the concerns. We maintain our house. We've been able to put a new furnace system in, and I don't know if we could have done that at the time without that extra income, especially as stay-at-home moms. And I know a bunch of them in this area that do that. It's a lot of work to clean up your house to have guests. But a lot of moms in this area make a lot of money for their families by doing it. So I, these are all really valid restrictions, owner occupancy and safety standards. If you put a cap on like forty days a year, that would hurt me because people don't just come for football. People come here for other events and family reunions and weddings. A lot of people used to live in this area and like to stay back in this area. So thank you for hearing my thoughts.
Hi, I'm Mike Keel. I'm her husband. I just wanted to tack a little something onto that. Um, uh, I'm totally committed to Bollesburg. I was a scout. I've been baptized here. You might have heard of the Troop Three Eighty. Or not. I don't know if you've been here long enough. I was, uh, uh, I'm a professional here. I serve people here. I'm, I'm totally committed to the area. I came back here to live here, and so we do have a lot invested in our property. And it sounds to me like you have different districts, because I'm hearing a lot of unhappiness in certain districts. Where we happen to be in particular, I don't think we've had any complaints, and I don't hear much about a sort of case-to-case basis. I think the, the provisions that you're talking about make sense to me. I know that a snag that we run into is a very old house. I know a lot of homes in Bollesburg are pretty, pretty old. I don't know if they meet those requirements or not, um, to pass that kind of an inspection. And one other thing that I would add on to this is that, um, to her point, uh, I kind of see the reverse, in a sense, if this is played outright, of bringing business, bringing people to, uh, to Harris Township, who wouldn't otherwise be here, could come to appreciate it. Those are the families that you'd like to have coming here. So that's all I would have to say. Thanks. Sure.
So you're, you're owner-occupied, correct?
Occupied.
You're owner-occupied, correct? How many, how many days, because, I mean, I wouldn't know, how many days do you feel is appropriate?
So we're privileged because we have a cabin in Huntington County. So if people want my house for the weekend, I'll pack up and go. So, I mean, there are months of the year, oh, I'm sorry. There, there are months of the year where we have no one coming. But there are surprising number of people who want to come in the summer. And since we can vacate, I mean, there are some months where people request it three weekends out of the month. So...
I guess, I guess...
I mean, I could do the math. A number.
Yeah.
So if you take January, February, March out of it, I could have people there three weekends a month if I...
Okay.
And thanks, we do appreciate you're trying to strike a balance.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Gobel, and we own one Airbnb here in Harris Township. Today, I happened to be talking with Steve Dersham, the county commissioner. He appeared with the other commissioners at Happy Valley Adventure Bureau. They were awarding grants. And he announced that the county itself for tourism passed a major landmark in 2024. They took in $1 billion, with a B, in tourist dollars. And he credited the hotel industry, Airbnb, and VRBO with being major supporters of the county being able to do this. So like the previous speakers, I feel that Airbnb, or whatever short-term rental platform you're on, is bringing people here. We most recently had a winner of the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science, who with her mom has rented our home multiple years. She had to leave early because she found out she was valedictorian of her high school, so there were some activities there. We had an adoptive family who came into the home for the very first night with their new baby and their new grandparents, who hadn't been grandparents before. These are people who do not want hotels and definitely aren't looking for long-term rentals, but they want to be here, and they want a home. The other thing is Airbnb is so strict, and the grades that you get as a host can be dropped. We were dropped once in percentages because somebody didn't like the weather that week. Okay? So it's pretty subjective. You have to have the home really great. So all of these situations that are talking about this much lawn, I don't know what platform they're on, but it's not Airbnb, because people definitely would not rent. As far as your question as to how many days, we could almost rent ours continually. Like the former speakers, we have a place we could go. So I'm hesitant to have you say this many days. The other question, I have two other questions. One is, will existing properties be grandfathered? We've done this for eight years, and it's actually part of our retirement plan. The other thing is, if people want to make comments to help guide the discussion, how, what's the best way to do that? To write to you, or? You probably want input.
Get a hold of this document.
Okay.
And react to the document.
And how would I do that? To write to you?
Well, Mark, you can, you can send comments to me, and I can forward those along to the board. And to answer your other question about grandfathering, that's a decision that the board would need to make. That was one of the things I.
Okay.
I'd mentioned as part of this framework was we would need some direction on what to do with these existing units, like the one you own.
I just wanted to thank you, too. I think everything you're thinking about is reasonable. The previous meeting that was held, it seemed kind of antagonistic, and I didn't understand that, because I think we all love Harris Township. And people are proving by wanting to these short-term rentals that they also love Harris Township, and some of them move here. So that's great. Thanks for the friendlier atmosphere this time.
Hi, friends. My name is Maria Mosley. I apologize for my appearance, but I came here directly from coaching my five-year-old's T-ball team. So that's what you get tonight. And my husband was coaching my 10-year-old's All-Star baseball team, so he is with the kids now. So I am one of those 88 houses. I'm owner-occupied. So when we bought our house five years ago, there was a separate entrance to the side of our home. And we saw that, so, so moving here, we lived in Altoona previously. Moving here, it was a lot more expensive to buy a house here than it was in Altoona. And so when we bought our home, and there was a separate entrance to the side of the house on this space, we saw that as a way to make it reasonable for us to live in this community, right, in State College. And so we have a room and a bathroom with a separate entrance. And those folks who stay with us do not have access to our home, right? There is a closed locked door in between, okay? So we are in our home while folks are staying with us. They park in our driveway. They don't disrupt the flow of traffic, right? And folks come, again, as others have said, for a variety of reasons. They stay for graduation. I've had folks from Germany who stayed with me for graduation weekend, and I had folks from Lebanon who stayed with me for graduation. The folks that stayed with me from Lebanon, their son was my student, right? I knew, I knew him very, very well. I work at Penn State. I'm an academic advisor in the College of Engineering, right? I've had people reach out to me from other Penn State campuses to say, hey, I heard about your Airbnb. Would you be willing, right? So I guess what I'm, ultimately what I'm trying to say is that my family has put a lot of time into making this space really, really nice, right? Like, if you drive upon my house, it's probably the nicest-looking house on my block, right? I mean, there are flowers, the grass is well-tended, right? It's beautiful. None of my neighbors have ever complained of a problem. I live there, right, and people stay there. If there's an issue, I address it immediately with the people who come in, okay? So this has helped my family so much. It's helped us pay off some debt. We have more debt to pay off. It's helped us put improvements back into our home. Our home was quite old. It was built in the 50s when we bought it. And so it still needs a lot of improvements. And so this is helping us to do things that we never would have been able to do without the Airbnb. I want to address the piece of the community, right? And the fact that when people ask me for a place to go eat, I send them to places in Harris Township. I send them to Duffy's all the time, right? I send them to Breakfast on Bowl. I send them locally, because I believe in these places, right, and I want people to enjoy them. The people who stay in our property, right, they stay there because it's clean and it's safe. You will not find a cleaner hotel in State College. You just won't find a hotel room as clean as my house. You will not, right? I've been in hotel rooms. I know what they're like. People stay because it's clean, it's safe, it's quiet. We provide them with a place to stay that makes them feel good about coming here. I have people that return month after month, right? If you limit to 40, I don't, I don't charge a lot. It's, it's a room and a bathroom, right? It's not a house. It's not a kitchen. It's a room and a bathroom. I don't charge a lot. I make it affordable for people to come and stay. If you limit me, and I under, I do, I understand that you have to put, you have to put limits in place. There's a house behind me that no one has lived in since we've moved in, right? There have been people in it, maybe graduation weekend. And the one graduation they weren't, they woke my kids up at 2:00 in the morning, because they were all out partying on the deck, right? I get it. I understand that limitations have to be put into place. But please understand that there are folks who are responsible and have situations that are making this so that it's part of the community. So I would just ask, if, I'm with these folks back here, if, if you limit me to 40 nights, I, I am, I am not going to do very well with it, and it won't help my family, right? So you asked the question, how many nights? I think I was booked about 90 nights last year. I never had a problem, not one problem with 90 nights. And I've only been, I've only been live 16 months, right? So when I say a year, right, about 90 nights and 16 months. So that's it. I just, I hope that you consider that there are people that have various situations, and that when you're putting these policies in place, you consider all of the situations and come to a compromise, right? Because it's been so helpful for my family. Thank you.
Hello, Brian Spang. I live in Kewood since 1991. We, our neighbors that are right next door to us, when they retired down to Philadelphia, we bought their home right next door to us. We are not owner-occupied. We VRBO and Airbnb that, probably rented at least 200 nights a week, out of the year. And providing services to this township and community, and business to this community. From people going skiing at Tussie Mountain, to people coming in for funerals that stay together as a family, that want a place that they can all gather together for, they're using stuff at graduation, you hear from all the other things in football, of course. But that's, but there's people doing business here, bringing business into the community, and they want a place to stay, to gather together. And as far as maintenance of the place, we put on a new roof. The place wasn't updated since the 70s. We put all-new flooring in. We put mini splits in all the, all the rooms. The whole property has been updated, completely updated. And as far as to come, piggyback on some of this, this is our retirement as well. Our children, we love our children, but they, they live all over the world, so we, we use the revenue to be able to visit our children. So it would really impact us if it was limited to nights, and we're not owner-occupied, but we're right next door to the property. So just take those things into consideration as you're going through things. There's many, many people that come here and provide business for this community. Just keep that in mind. Thank you.
I'll be quick, I'll be quick this time, because everybody, Fred Daly, everybody pretty much said what I wanted to say. I just wanted to, one question to you to think about is, why does it stop at 29 days for a short term when a long-term rental can be 365 days? So I just want to throw that out there. And the other thing is, I'm glad you put that number up there, Mark, 88. You probably missed some, right? It seems like the week, the meetings I've been here, there's a complaint about four homes in there in Willowbrook. I haven't heard a complaint about the hill. I could go on and on. And so what's that percentage? So let's just round it up a little bit to 100, and there's four homes. You know, I get you in Willowbrook. And if it was my neighborhood, I'd make sure they were changed, too. But everybody doesn't have to suffer, because those four people aren't doing things the right way. Thank you.
I was here before. I think there's a difference. We've heard of different owner situations. I think there's a difference between women who just spoke, who has a separate entrance and rents a room, and what that rental could possibly be. And the concept of owner-occupied, where someone is getting out and going to a cabin that they own, because in theory, the person who lives there year-round and rents a room is not disturbed in their living. The person who is leaving and has the ability to leave every night of the year, how much of that is owner-occupied? You know, if, if I own, if I own a place somewhere else, and I, in theory, own a place that's an Airbnb in Harris Township, I don't really ever have to spend a night in Harris Township. I can say it's owner-occupied, but I'm really living somewhere else, and I can rent it every single night of the year, or I can stop by and stay in Harris Township for a week. I mean, there has to be a definition. And what I was hearing from the last couple of owners is, they don't want any kind of a restriction on how, how many nights they really have to be on the property. And the concern, of course, in these neighborhoods is, if you're not in the neighborhood, you can't appreciate what's going on while you're not there. And while, I understand Airbnb, I've rented Airbnb, and I've rented Verbo. And I understand that there's a rating system, but unfortunately Airbnb doesn't extend that rating system for the neighbors to have a say in how things went. The person who rents it gets a say, and the person they rented it from gets a say, but the people in the neighborhood don't get to rate it. So those ratings, I can appreciate that you're rated well as a, you know, a good rental and all those things. But the people in it that are immediately impacted in your neighborhood, who happen to be there when you're not there, they don't necessarily get a say. So that's all.
Thank you for your time. My name's Liam Gobel. I do own a couple Airbnbs in the area, Harris Township and some of the other townships. I am not owner-occupied. To your comment about, you know, the neighbors having a say, I talk to my neighbors. And I'm through my homes on a weekly basis, so I know what's going on. All my neighbors have my phone number. They know how to get in touch with me when anything happens. A lot of my neighbors, you know, if there is something wrong at my house, they're calling me to say, hey, a tree blew over in the windstorm. Do you need help removing it? And so the neighbor and I, with their tractor, pulled the tree out and, and got rid of it. My Airbnbs are part of my retirement as well, so obviously I'm worried that you guys are going to take my retirement from me. But then beyond that, what I do is, a lot of these, some people buy ready-to-go homes, and I know the Willowbrook homes are fairly ready to go, you know, they could be owner-occupied immediately. I buy homes that are nowhere close to being owner-occupied, whether it's leaking sewage pipes throughout the house, bad wiring, dead animals in the walls, or all of the above. That's what I, I'm, I'm a carpenter by trade, so I spend my days and nights away from my family to put that together so that we have something for the future for ourselves. And so it's, it's, I'm afraid for what you guys are going to do to me. And it's frustrating to sit here and be worried about that. Do you guys have a timeline that you're looking at, or?
I don't know. Well, we've got some, some things to talk about. How soon we coalesce.
Right, right. Do you guys, do you guys have anything you're, you're shooting for, or? Like, end of the summer?
Shooting to get an ordinance, or to get a, a system for short-room rentals. That's it.
I think, I, I agree with regulation. I think something needs to be done. I think at least having code come through and, and go through the property. It's, it, code does provide a health and safety aspect that every house then has, and will probably make it actually better than any of the homes you live in currently, healthier and safer. I don't agree with a cap on the number of nights. We're typically 200 nights rented, 225 nights rented, something like that, for a variety of reasons. It's not just football and parties. A lot of my neighbors say the only reason they know people are in the house is because there's a car in the driveway, not because it's loud, grass is never high, because we're always there mowing. I'm through on a weekly basis. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
These are all R-type zones, which aren't supposed to have businesses in them, and we're almost approaching this as, there's businesses here. What can we do to regulate them? You really should be approaching it as, we want to add something to the R zones. Any, but, one that's, anything that's done is a benefit, because right now, I don't think your code allows any business in these R1, R2 zones. That's all.
There are family, there are home businesses that are allowed.
There's, there's a list of them in our ordinances, but, so.
Airbnb one?
No, we have no, nothing at this point on Airbnb. Yeah, that, that's fairly recent.
Long-term rental one?
Long-term rentals in Harris Township have to be inspected by Center Region Code already. Yeah, it's kind of funny. Long-term rentals have just never even been an issue, because there's somebody there all the time. And this is, there's a difference between that and, you know, I mean, I own, I have an investment property, and I have long-term tenants. I don't want to deal with the Airbnb hassle. And, and I don't want to do that to my neighborhood. I want somebody living in the house. And so there, there's got to be a balance. Long-term rentals have always been allowed with just the conditions of Center Region Code inspection. And of course, if there's complaints and, you know, violations and complaints, and there can be issues that the code follows, the code office would follow up with.
And so, if I may, I'd like to bring this up to the board now. Thank you for all your input. So comments around the table.
I got lots of comments.
I can go first. It doesn't matter. Okay, I, I was listening to everybody's comments and, and concerns. I'm going to say 95% of them would be answered with this document. I mean, we, we talked to staff. We gave them our input. And they, I think they did a good job of getting the good framework of this. I think there's some things that, that we do need to look at. I, I'm firmly in favor of owner-occupied. I think that's, I think that's what we're talking about. We don't want, you know, corporations from around the world buying up houses in our township and, and calling them rental properties. I don't think that's what we want. I don't think that's what R1 wants. There are some things, we did have, we do have some exemptions in here. Academy, academic, sabbatical, or fellowship. Uh, academy, academic, sabbatical, or fellowship. Military deployment or service-related reassignment. Temporary work-relocations, medical treatment or caregiving responsibilities. So, even though, you know, you, you aren't there, you could still use that property as a rental for a short-term owner occupied, because you're in that. Like, for example, I had somebody call me today that, I wasn't even aware of this profession, but, uh, they called them traveling nurses, and...
You didn't know that?
No, I didn't know.
Where have you been?
I'm, I'm, I'm an old guy. I'm an old, I'm an old guy, come on.
They're traveling vets, too.
But anyway, you know, where they ha- they may, they, they live here, they have a house here, but they may get, get, uh, a job, or, or get transferred to a job that maybe they're out of state for three months, you know? So, are we gonna count that? I think you should count that as owner occupied, because they live here permanently, and their, their work is taking them out of the area. So, I think there's some things like that. I think that, um, I think that, that, you know, this comes to light, because no matter what you put in regulations, no matter how you do it, there's always the one that, the outlier that makes everybody upset. And we've seen it with the pictures of the house, where we had one up here on Crestview, where a fraternity got an Airbnb rental up there and had a fraternity party, which, that was a nightmare. So, I think that it, that we've gotta put these regulations together, that we keep the community the way it is. And I think, that's why I said, I think a lot of this is spelled out in this. I, 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 like I said, I'm really a fan of owner occupied. I think, I think that we don't want to take from our residents in the township, the ability to make money. I, I, I don't think we need to do that. I think if, if you have a house, in my opinion, if you have a house, and you want to rent it out for a weekend and go live with your in-laws, more power to you, have a ball. You know, but, you're coming back. The, the, the key point to me is, that you're living in that house the majority of the time, and you're taking care of it, and it, it's, it's meaningful to you. Because that will keep the community together. If we get people that are divorced from the properties for a long period of time, and they don't come back, I think that's where we see all this issue that we're hearing. And so, I think that, and I think, Mark, you get this on the site, and people look at it. We get some comments back from you. I would like to see us start getting this narrowed down to, uh, the one thing we were talking about is grandfather. We, you know, how do you grandfather? Do you grandfather it and say it's forever? Do you grandfather it and say, hey, we're gonna grandfather it for three years, and that'll give people time to, to, you know, get rid of their asset, or, or recoup, or whatever? I don't know. That's, I think, something we, we really need to, to do some research on and see what a, what the best way is. But, that's kinda where I'm at with it. I think we're on the right track. I just think we need the time to get it done.
I, you know, I like the framework of this. I have a lot of questions and markup. And I too, like, I, I believe in more owner occupancy, but I, I go back to the point that we have the situation now, where we've got people who are doing the right thing, and they've come to rely on this for one reason or another. And I guess I'm really not so sure that it's fair to take the limited number that we have away. However, I think that there needs to be some restrictions on that. You sell, it doesn't follow. You sell a house, you can sell an Airbnb, um, just, I think that...
But if you transfer to a family member, you sell it, or you, you buy it?
Yeah, we talked about that, yeah, I, yeah, we talked about that. Um, you know, transferring to a family member is, is another thing. But, um, I guess, um, I would like to see, you know, you, you talk about keeping your home very nicely and everything else. Well, the two in my neighborhood look like crap. You know, I mean, I just, but, and, and I think that that's the biggest problem that we see. I also think that, um, if you have a certain number of violations, um, you lose your, you lose it permanently. You lose your permit permanently. And I like to see some of these things. And so, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm kind of want, I want a balance. I'm looking for a balance. And, um, and I wouldn't want any more. But I am looking for a balance in what we have already, because I think that is fair.
Question?
Yeah.
So, have you thought about?
Yeah.
I don't know that the mic is on.
It, it collects receipt and, or trouble.
Okay. I was listening, the people that are concerned about owner occupancy... Anyway, um, the people that are, um, and we are concerned about the owner occupancy and the limit. Um, we, our house rents over two-hundred days a year. It's, it's really popular. So, if a person lives nearby in the community, um, one of the, uh, the young man that spoke earlier, um, lives in a, a neighboring township. So, we're at our house three times a week, um, even when it is rented. So, maybe, maybe there's a pattern or a model in some other, um, situation, where if someone is, has a residence in State, the State College area, they could be considered as owner near, um, something like that. It's, the other thing is, people complain about these homes as being, like, empty, and yet, you're limiting the number of nights. Uh, our house is never empty. So, uh, it's some conflicts and things to think about. Thanks. Should we go anywhere for this tornado? What should we do?
Proceed. Table's probably the safe, frankly, but, uh, never dealt with a tornado warning in a... Put it in a meeting? In the middle of a meeting? I've never had one in the middle of a meeting before.
Uh, yeah, there's a little commotion right now.
Um, for those, for those who can hear me, um, I just wanted to say, um, and I've, I've spoke here before, and I think a lot of people who spoke tonight sort of captured everything. There's, there's both sides of the story. I've talked to both sides. I would say, I appreciate you, uh, you know, considering the grandfathering. I think if you look at every other municipality, including Belfont, who has pretty much downright outlawed it, except for in commercial districts, they've still, um, they've still grandfathered all existing owners. Uh, that goes for the borough with student properties as well. I'm a Realtor. I see a lot of transfer of student property. And as things change throughout the year, you have people who buy and rely upon the ordinance that is in place at that moment. And so, to take that away from them, so I'm, I am a non-owner occupied, but I live in Ferguson Township. My neighbor is here tonight. I won't point him out. But, we have significantly improved that property, to where we have gotten a lot of compliments and thank yous for not vacating the house so that there's no one living there, and that it's a detriment to the neighborhood, but in fact, lifting it up so that it's actually a benefit to the neighborhood. It looks better. It's more taken care of. Uh, so, again, for the grandfathering, I would really just, you know, encourage you to look at some of these other townships that have done this. College Township, again, has very restrictive rules, but has agreed to grandfather. Um, and then I also would be in favor of at least a hundred-and-twenty days, um, a year. Uh, I feel like most, um, most people, uh, are, are able to rent that. And, uh, just again echoing the fact that this weekend, we had people in for a state high graduation. It was a large family. And then, uh, this Thanksgiving, we had a family in Harris Acres, uh, who had spillover into our neighborhood, um, so they were able to have their family there. So, I appreciate all that you've done. I appreciate you creating the ordinance. I'll look forward to an opportunity to review that ordinance and, and make comments as well. Uh, but I think, as a number of people have said here, I think striking balance makes a lot of sense. We've got people on one side, we've got people on the other side. And I, I just keep hearing, it keeps getting repeated. I feel like we have one, maybe two, bad apples. Because every time somebody comes up here and complains, it's about the same house. And so, how do we make ordinances that affect the people who are breaking them, instead of punishing everybody who might choose to have, you know, an additional source of income? And I love your comment. It's, I don't believe that's in the zoning, that you can long-term rent, any more than it's in there that you can short-term rent. And so, if we're going by zoning, and we're saying that's not in it, well, long-term rental's not in it either, so we need to revise that, to either include that, or say that it is, it, maybe new ordinance needs to be developed for long-term rental. So, I think, again, striking balance, being fair, listening to both sides of the stories. I appreciate, uh...
I, I could kinda say, I would appreciate your, if you read this over and your comments, because I think a lot of, a lot of the questions and the problems that we hear would, um, would be taken care of.
Yeah. And I didn't know about that document until tonight, and I've been sort of following. So, I think that giving people an opportunity to review it and, um, and comment is, is super helpful. But, you know, I'll, I'll leave by saying, we are not an owner occupant. We take extremely good care. It is a source of pride for us. Um, I've lived in State College all of my life. I'm the third generation here. I sell State College. I'm a Realtor. I own, uh, a real estate company here. It is of utmost importance to me, both personally, financially, from a business perspective, that our neighborhoods remain neighborhoods. And so, again, please don't let a couple bad apples spoil your opinion, because really, that's what it sounds like to me. So, just my opinion.
Let's try to keep this moving along, practically.
Yeah, just, just a quick follow-up to this, and then, and I'm not gonna disagree with anything he said, but here's the deal. Everybody around us is passing ordinances or whatever that, that, that's canceling it out. So, guess where they're gonna come if we don't get something on the books?
Yeah, and I am a hundred percent...
And that's what we're looking to do.
Hundred percent in favor of ordinance. I've mentioned to you before, but I have a rental permit, even though I'm not required to. I think it's the right thing to do from a safety perspective. Um, so, I'm all, I am, I, I want to be clear in that I am all for ordinance. I think you guys are on the right track. I just encourage you to listen to, again, both sides of it. So, thank you.
Nigel, any comments?
Yeah, okay. Um, well, first of all, I think, please, please let the board share all their ideas before we keep on going back and forth. I think you'll find that all of us want to do something reasonable. I'm not opposed to the possibility of grandfathering ones that exist, because the vast majority of it haven't been a problem. But I am concerned about more and more homes becoming vacant. There's three on my street vacant. They're not rented that often either. That's what, it, it's kinda mind-blowing that, like, every other weekend, maybe, one of them's rented, and another one's rented, pretty, pretty regularly on weekends. But, well, first of all, we have to craft something that's not gonna be too much of a headache and too much of a cost for the township. I don't think, I'm gonna say this right now. I don't think a limit on the number of nights is really necessary, because I think the market's gonna drive that. Majority of these properties aren't gonna be rented for that, more than a hundred days. Majority. Now, there are some exceptions, obviously. If they haven't, if they're not a problem, and we don't have violations, and nobody's concerned, we can let those, we can let those slide. But, I'm concerned about the degradation of neighborhoods, the, the in, the, the driving up of property prices, because people are investing. And this is gonna keep happening if we don't get a handle on it. I mean, when, when a home adjacent to mine, the, a bidding war went up, the people that bought it ended up paying a bit more for it, um, because they're competing against somebody that wanted to buy it, just leave it au- you know, vacant, an Airbnb. And so, that's not good. We, we can't have, we can't have businesses competing with people that want to buy a home to live in. So, again, but, we got two issues here. We got the, we have your owner occupied, where you're vacating the home and the whole thing, you know? And that, that's fine and dandy. And then you have your ones that are an accessory use on the property, and you still remain there. They, they can be governed a little bit differently, I think. But, again, owner occupied, I think for the primary unit, is, is very important. Just a quick question?
Yeah, why would they be governed differently even if you're on the property full-time? 'Cause I have a guest house that I use...
Yeah, well, there may be...
And I'm there all the time.
Yeah, no, I mean, if you, you have a guest house, and you live in another unit on the property.
Yeah, right next door.
Yeah.
Thirty feet apart.
That's interesting.
That's a guest house. That's not an unoccupied home. That's on your property.
Yeah.
So, that's not, that's not even, you know, like, on the property you live on. So, that's, that's the same as an accessory. It's not doing the whole home. The, the owner occupied and being, living there at least eight months, or whatever we decide, is primarily for those people that want to rent the whole house. And, um, so, that, that's really important in my mind. But, we can't, like, limiting the number of days is a big cost. The borough has to pay a, a company to try to keep track of all this, and they're not pulling it off. I know that for a fact. They're not pulling it off. People, so, so that, that's something I don't even want to get into. I think the market will determine that.
When you're saying about the houses that aren't occupied, like, ours, okay? Why wouldn't you want it to be more nights, so more people are in the neighborhood?
Well, I don't have...
I mean, you're saying, we don't want to look over that house being unoccupied?
Again, I don't have a...
I know, but let them rent it two-hundred-and-fifty days, which we don't.
Right. Well, you're, the market's gonna say it's not gonna happen, so it's not gonna be that big of a deal.
But, we're spinning our wheels here, please, please.
Yeah, let's, anyway, please let me, yeah, let me finish my, my thoughts here. But, um, parking is an issue. That eleven cars on the grass, that's, that's not cutting it. And that, that unit would be shut down pretty quickly for violation like that. Now, I don't agree with, um, macadam or concrete for a parking space, 'cause you can use pavers or gravel and create parking spaces. I don't know where that came from in your research, but, uh, you know, the borough doesn't require that. I know that for a fact. There's gotta be a parking space, um, for each, each room. And, having Center Region Code in will determine occupancy, safe occupancy, which is very important. So, like, no, sixteen people in a four-bedroom house, no, I don't think so. Yeah, so, I mean...
Property that's ruining it for everybody.
But that's a beautiful property. It's a beautiful property.
Well, you know, the, I mean, the, the license could be revoked if they keep on going. But again, I, I think, you know, we have obviously responsible people in the township, running Airbnb's, um, as, and not living there, and that's, I don't, I don't want to take that opportunity, necessarily take that opportunity away from them, as long as they're compliant with the rest of the ordinance. But, as far as allowing new ones to come in, and just keep driving the prices of homes up, that's not what we want. Because, and we're, again, we're like the last one, second to the last one, that's creating an ordinance. And so, people have moved in, and like, in, the, the ones in my, on my street have all happened within the last year or two. And, you know, so, obviously, it's, you know, really lucrative way to do it. Now, I don't know what it is about, you know, long-term rentals, but that's always been, that's always been allowed. And, and then, I don't remember when we signed on, onto it, quite a while ago, actually. So, we, you know, that's covered under Rental Housing Code. A person has to get a permit and have the whole property inspected. But, some, the most important things in my mind are owner occupied, and, and parking, and safety. And, let's keep it simple, other than that. Um, but, maybe, you know, a little flexibility for people that already have them, that aren't, um, that aren't living there.
Danny?
I've zeroed into parking. There are two sections. Uh, the permanent application requirement, item G talks about, uh, parking. And then, on the next page, uh, under the short-term rental requirements, uh, item E is three separate items regarding parking. I think parking, in, in a lot of ways, will control the, uh, situation with respect to, uh, bedroom, and a parking space feeds bedroom.
Well, that's fine and dandy, except what do you do when they come down and park on the street down here, and then haul everybody back up there? And there's still sixteen people in a unit, so...
I think that can be talked about in the document.
No, I think that occupancy limits are important.
I think those are very rare cases.
Totally, totally get it, but I do think there has to be occupancy limits.
Okay, so, let me, um, one, owner occupied, and this document says that people must be on the property for at least eight months of the calendar year, in total, to be owner occupied. So, that's kind of a different requirement than saying how many nights you can have guests staying. staying. And so, and both of those, we can balance. We don't have to stick with the eight months. We could do something else. But, you know, we, it's, it's kind of a balance we're gonna need to strike. One of the things I really like in this document, we haven't talked about, is a licensee, or she'll designate a person in charge who's been assigned to the property owner to represent the client. That person must be at least 21 years of age, reside within 25 miles of the short-term rental, and must be locally available 24/7, whenever the property is being rented. Okay, so that's, that's some information, and that's some information that perhaps we could, the neighbors could request to know who that is. If we go to deal with some of these absentee ownership things, whether it be local or long-distance, if we do put a limit on it, I think we, we need to put a timeframe to do it, to allow some, so we just don't cut somebody off at the knees, but allow them to transition in a reasonable, in a reasonable manner, so that your investment is safe and you can, you can then transition that property to a long-term rental or sell it. But somehow, if we're gonna, if we are gonna do that not-grandfather things in forever, then we need to make sure it's a reasonable way that we, that we transition. And the last thing I'll just mention is, you know, the tool we have in our toolbox is code enforcement. And we have here, in this one, I think, three violations, and three, not, not people complaining three times, but three times where we've filed citations that you're done. So, those are my brief comments. Please, everybody, I thank you all for your input. I, I know I'm trying to cut you off, and I'm also trying to be respectful of people. We got other things to get to. We will make this available. Love to see your input, hear your input. We're gonna work on it. We may have to go around again, because there's a lot of issues here. And so, we're gonna try to refine what's here. But if we have to take another meeting to get further feedback on how we've tried to fine-tune it, we're certainly gonna be here, and we'll listen to everybody.
Make sure when you make it available online, that the yellow line you used-
Yeah.
Appears, rather than just-
You know, violating it.
Yeah, okay, whatever tactic or system.
Can I get two numbers from you? How many numbers did you say were non-occupied Airbnbs? Thirty-three?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. How many residential homes are in Harris Township?
About, about-
I won't hold you.
About 2150 to 2200.
You say it, 2200.
2150 to 22, depending on how the building is going.
My point is, just in, just mentioning the grandfather thing, of course, I have one, so I'd be all in favor of 33 homes out of 22. Sure. I, I see your point of, we don't want anymore. You know, but all of a sudden, you say, let's go three years, then we're gonna get away with it?
She wants you to-
You're cutting your legs off slowly, instead of cutting them off.
Right. But I also, you know, the problem is, we've had a lot of complaints. And, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying they're complaining about your property, but we have had complaints, and this is, seems to be growing. So we need to make sure that it doesn't get out of hand. Okay?
So you're talking about the grandfather thing, and then the violations are as high as they should be. You violate, you know, people violate.
Fred.
Okay.
You can fill the microphone if you see. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I mean, that violations should be the number-one thing. That seems to be the ones these homes are being complained about. They're complaining about violations that you need to put in order.
Yep.
Of so many violations, the parking, unkept properties, you know, those are the kind of things. It doesn't have to suffer everybody.
So, one, just one quick thing to consider, as, as a possible alternative to the owner-occupied thing, is what if the person who's buying the property, that it's gonna Airbnb it or VRBO it, has to be a resident in the area? Just, can you just consider that as, as no thing? Because then, then they're invested in this area. They're invested in the area.
I don't think we can leave it like that.
I think that's a restraint of trade issue. No, I think you can do that.
That's like Frank earlier saying, if you live out of the area, we're gonna charge you more.
Yeah, no, we can't do that.
All right, all right, all right. Thank you, thank you. Let's move on, please. All right. Next item on the agenda is corridor overlay district analysis and ordinance amendments.
Is this why the heavy artillery came out?
Is this why the heavy artillery came out?
All right. So in August of '24, staff and planning commission began reviewing the existing COD regulations to ensure that the intent of the ordinance is meeting the needs of the township. So let me get, let everyone go on. Okay, let me share.
Oh, sorry. Yes, yes. We finally got to, let somebody else share their screen. All right, try now.
So staff has concluded our review and analysis of this ordinance. We've been working with planning commission for the last few months on the proposed amendments that are in front of you today, which seems extreme to repeal the COD, and then essentially replace it in kind with a landscaping and screening ordinance. So the area that we're talking about is highlighted in blue. So essentially, this is an overlay zoning district in Harris Township. It's applicable to properties that are within 665 feet of Route 45 and Route 322. So, we conducted our review. Key issues that we identified with the ordinance was that there were duplicative regulations, conflicting or outdated requirements with other sections of your ordinances and/or updated code changes. Landscaping and screening standards were spread across multiple ordinances. So when I say, when I say duplicative regulations, you had landscaping regulations specifically for your industrial district, and then you had other landscaping regulations elsewhere. So it was confusing to figure out the differences between all of these, in addition to this corridor overlay district, making it very inefficient for applicants and staff, frankly, to understand. So what's being proposed in front of you is a repeal of this ordinance, this zoning district. But in reality, after staff concluded our review, a lot of these sections of this ordinance are in other ordinances and/or better suited to be in a separate ordinance. So the left column that you see, these are the sections of the corridor overlay district. It's actually a pretty short ordinance overall. And then on the right column, where we are recommending to relocate those specific sections. So we're not losing anything. Everything is gonna be relocated either to the saldo or another part in the zoning ordinance. And then that final row, the landscaping requirements within this overlay area, we would be establishing one singular landscaping and screening ordinance for Harris Township, where we would now be bringing all these landscaping regulations from your industrial district, from all these other places, into one place that applicants and staff can go to, to look and read this. So the township has land use classification table. So this essentially designates what type of uses, are abutting one another, what type of screening and/or landscaping is required. That goes away. The proposed landscaping screening ordinance that is included in the packet I provided, it, the key features anyways, unified regulations. So we have all landscaping screening standards are consolidated into one ordinance for consistency and ease of application. We have reduced density of plantings. Compared to the existing requirements, the density and quantity of plantings required under the new ordinance have been greatly reduced. We have no new regulatory burdens. So what that means is the ordinance doesn't introduce new landscaping requirements. Rather, it's organizing and simplifying your current standards that already exist into one place for everyone. Let's see. And then my computer froze. Okay, there we are. So the summary of the proposed ordinance, you have the landscaping requirements on the left, and then the screen requirements on the right. I have diagrams, so we're gonna go through this, so you can actually see what this means. And then parking islands, that's not gonna be located in this landscaping ordinance. We're gonna relocate that to the off-street parking and loading regulations. That is where you will find the design of parking lots, which is where the parking islands come in handy, so that we identify as more appropriate location for those regulations. So this is a rendering of the proposed screening regulations. We are giving flexibility to these owners. So essentially, if you have a commercial or industrial use, abutting a residential zone, you will need a screen for that portion of your property that is directly abutting a residential zoning district. So in this rendering on the left, you can see that in the draft ordinance, we're given the flexibility of the applicant to plant the screen no less than five, no greater than 20 feet from the property line, all around, wherever they are abutting that residential zoning district. We like the minimum of five feet, only because it allows that property owner to get through with a lawnmower to cut on the opposite side of their property. We've run into issues in other municipalities where you permit plantings up onto the property line. There always are issues with cutting the grass and whatnot. So just to completely remove that from the idea. And then on the right side, if that applicant wanted to install a fence, a solid fence, similar to the requirements that are already in the village commercial district, I believe, they can significantly reduce their plantings by half, if they chose to do fencing, in addition to a couple of plantings around the outer edges of that property. And again, similar to these landscaping plantings, the fence, we are also giving that flexibility, no less than 10 feet, no greater than 20, from your property line. Now, the flexibility that we have put into this screening thing is in instances where you have very large lots, commercial and/or industrial lots, that are over 100 feet from a residential zoning district. In that instance, you would not need to screen that portion of your property if it's greater than 100 feet from your residential zoning district. Staff felt that was far enough. We've had past screening and landscaping issues for larger lots like this. So this was an idea that we put together to provide a little more flexibility, given size of lots in certain situations. And then, these are the landscaping requirements. So all of these requirements, they are not new. They are coming from your village commercial regulations and/or other ones that we found that we liked and wanted to keep, and compiled them all into one. So your front yard, you have small trees and shrubs, per linear foot, side and rear.
We talked, and I don't remember how long ago it was, we talked about our landscaping of how many trees we, we had, we thought we had way too many. We wanted that looked at. Does this incorporate that, that exercise? Okay, thank you.
This, this is reduced down to what is in village commercial, which was something that the shade tree commission had provided some input on.
Okay.
Our current ordinance for corridor overlay was kind of a reforestation requirement, where this is a little, a lot more reasonable.
So we did get some advice.
No, we just, we just pulled it out of our hat earlier.
We did.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Jenna, Mark McGinn. You said in the front, you want to have a living surface, correct?
The entire open area of the lot, there must be 75% of landscaped living ground cover. So grass, I don't know if we include mulch.
So do you consider mulch to be living?
I don't believe we include mulch in that.
So if somebody has a large planting bed with all these shrubs and trees in it, and they want to reduce their maintenance costs by creating a mulch area where these are planted, so that the, the adjacent grass doesn't infringe on the plant material, would you permit that or not?
I think we'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. If somebody was planting a thousand-square-foot mulch bed with three trees in it, no, we obviously would not.
Good, good point, good point. But I think that ought to be considered as far as considering that the landowner might want to reduce their maintenance costs. I don't have to get dizzy driving around all those shrubs in the front yard. The other thing is you mentioned about small crown trees. Somebody gonna develop an acceptable list of small crown trees that people can look at and utilize when they're selecting material for them?
Yep. So the region is actually working on a regional planting list. I don't know where they are in that process.
I think they're fairly close to having that done, yes.
Okay.
So yes, they-
Thank you.
Okay, folks, should we have staff put together an ordinance and take a look at it?
Sure, we can.
I think so, yeah.
Finish it.
Consensus?
Do you want us to bring it back to you again, or do you want us to send it to the center regional planning commission for comment first?
Yeah, yeah, let them take a look at it.
Okay.
Do a hearing there in two months.
I like the thought about the mulch, though.
Yeah.
What are we gonna, what do we do about mulch?
We do it on a case-by-case basis, like you said.
But that's an awful, that's an awful kind of question, isn't it?
Jen, is it 75% of the, it's all, of all open areas?
Open areas.
Correct. So it doesn't include the building?
No.
So 75% have to have some type of living vegetation. And keep in mind, this is only for non-residential properties. This isn't for a residential property. This is gonna be commercial space.
It would've gone through land development.
Right.
A site plan would not be required with this.
All right. Paul taking over for a minute.
So, my consensus that we're gonna send it to the planning commission, right, so we gather.
Send it to Jenna.
Yeah, back to Jenna.
I don't believe we have a July meeting, so it'll be on for August.
Okay.
Perfect.
Not a big hurry. Okay, next on the agenda is the riparian buffer markers waiver request.
Yeah, on June 2 of this year, Tom Songer submitted a written waiver request for the Hockridge Lot 1 minor subdivision plan, a plan the board supervisors conditionally approved at the May meeting. And that was subsequently recorded. Mr. Songer is requesting that the board waive the requirement of 11-4.14.4 that requires riparian buffer markers to be made of fiberglass boundary markers, carcinite or the equivalent. Mr. Songer would instead like to display the eight required riparian buffer signs on steel posts. Staff takes no position on the request, but the ordinance requirement for the signs to be constructed of fiberglass, carcinite or similar material is a specific recommendation of the committee appointed to study riparian buffer ordinances. The committee thought it important that the markers have some physical flexibility to reduce or eliminate the possibility of injury to people or animals, particularly children. Additionally, the committee thought that the narrow, flexible markers would best delineate the riparian buffer boundaries without looking garish or obtrusive. Also, the committee discussed the possibility that farm or other property maintenance vehicles and equipment might be more easily damaged by rigid delineators. Waiver requests are typically considered as part of the plan approval process prior to action by the board supervisors. That being said, this request is very minor in scope. This request also marks the first waiver request submitted for riparian buffer marker materials. Staff's recommendation is this is a discussion item. If the board feels that the waiver request, the waiver request for the lot, Hockridge Lot 1 subdivision is appropriate or inappropriate, such a motion should be made. If a motion is made, the ordinance section to reference is 11-4.14.4.
Anybody? Hello? I don't know. What's, what's the big guy's?
What's, like, DCNR, everybody say about that? Are they, they, they-
They think they care.
They don't care.
It's, it's local, it's whatever the local municipality decides.
I, I'm under the opinion that if we had- I, I'm under the opinion that if we had, um, the committee appointed to study riparian buffer ordinances, um, and also the plain fact of the matter that they were concerned, um, about eliminating the possibility of injury to people or animals, particularly children, and also the garish, yella, 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 I, I will take their opinion into account.
May I address the board?
Please.
Okay, so I submitted my waiver request after, uh, reviewing the, uh, the ordinance, and basically, as has been stated, the ordinance says fiberglass markers, carcinite or equivalent. So, most signs in our area that I see, including your road signs, you use steel posts. Carcinite is a special material that's flexible, and it's meant, you could actually, I guess, drive over it and it would spring back up. But, the, uh, and I gave you examples of the riparian buffer signs that the, uh, Pennsylvania Fish and Game Commission uses, that's down at Fisherman's Paradise. And I went down there recently, they, they have some signs put up, just to let people know this is a riparian buffer zone, and that they, behind the sign going towards Spring Creek, they just let the grass grow, so that, that there's no, uh, so that it filters anything that might run off the parking area that's adjacent to these signs. Their signs are spread out at a hundred or more feet, and they don't have them everywhere, they just have them in selected areas, primarily parking areas along Spring Creek. So, when I got to looking into this, and I apologize for not having done this before, uh, but I didn't realize how expensive carcinite's material is. So carcinite materials cost like thirty dollars a post, and you gotta put the sign on it, and, and then you've gotta locate it. And you can't just go out and pound the signs in, you have to hire a surveyor to go out and locate where the signs should be. So that's another expense. Uh, the surveyor that I use, Pentera Engineering, uh, they charge a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. So you've got it, you've got that expense also. But then, uh, the more I thought about it, I said, well, why can't we just use regular steel posts that are readily available at Tractor Supply, whereas these carcinite stakes, you gotta order those special, 'cause it's a, a special brand name. So, uh, so for the McGann subdivision, it's Martin's subdivision here where he lives, and I'm just working as his consultant, uh, on this, uh, I just am requesting that we be allowed to put in steel stakes, and we require about eight of those. And since construction on one of the lots adjacent to what, where Martin's house is expected, and this subdivision has been approved and recorded, the three-lot McGann subdivision, and, and so, we expect one of the lots to be built on within the next year, so, and it's only eight signs, so yes, put those signs up to alert the contractor who's gonna be doing grading on the house that's gonna be built, you gotta stay away from, from the riparian buffer zone, which is fifty feet on either side of the drainage swell that runs through the property, which if you go up and look at it, some people would call it a ditch. And I was just up there earlier today, and with all the rain we had over the weekend, et cetera, there's no water running in this swell. But, it's identified by the state as an intermittent stream, so we have to put these, uh, riparian buffer signs up. But there's a reason to do that, because if you're gonna be building on there in the next year, then it does serve the purpose of the ordinance, and it alerts the contractor, stay away from between the stream and where the signs are. So that's, that's the basic reason. Uh, furthermore, I would encourage you to go up to Bull City, where these fiberglass carcinite signs have been installed, and I don't think there's one of them that I would say is truly perpendicular. They've fallen over at an angle, and, and, uh, it, it, they're in a lawned area, so you can't, they're an obstruction to mowing, but they have to be there, so somebody's gonna go out there with a weed eater, you know, and trim, trim around them. So I don't know, Mark, did you bring that picture up?
Is that the ones you'd like, is the pictures of Bull City?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me, uh, share my screen here. And of course, my screen's over here, give me a second to drag this over. There we go.
There's another one. Oh, yeah, well, you can see there, they're, they're bent over, there's weeds growing, there's grass growing around them, so whoever's responsible for cutting the grass has to go out there now with a weed eater. But that's okay, it's per your ordinance, but I'm just saying, you compare those sign posts to a steel sign post that I just talked about, I don't know, Mark, can you bring that picture up that I included with my waiver application?
Um, I don't have that, that's, that's, all of them have that in front.
Okay, well, anyway, as I said, I went up along Spring Creek to, uh, lands controlled by the Fish Commission, they have the steel posts, which is, was in my application, and all of them are perfectly straight, there's no problem, they're doing the job, but you can see what happens here, I don't know why they're falling over, but it, aesthetically to me, it just doesn't look all that good. So anyway, uh, we'd like to be able to use steel signs, posts, rather than carcinite, on Lot Twelve, on either side of the, uh, drainage swell that runs through Lot Twelve.
Todd? What effect does the granting of the waiver do to the validity of the waiver program, uh, the riparian program?
Well, you'd set a precedent that pretty much anybody could come in and request that. I, I think, I think the only variable in all of this discussion is the cost of the stakes in the, themselves. Uh, everything else will be the same, uh, uh, the surveyor's gonna have to locate where to put the steel stakes, maintenance is gonna be the same, they only have to be in place for three years. Steel signs that we use for our street signs are, in theory, there forever, uh, and they're on breakaway posts for safety reasons. Uh, so these are, these are just signs that, temporary signs that have to be there for, for three years.
His request to go from eighty-five to eight?
No, that's a different property.
That's a different property.
Okay, okay. I, I, I didn't think that was related, okay.
I just have a question. How come they can cut grass inside a riparian buffer?
Well, they're not really supposed to be doing that.
I didn't think so either.
I don't know that property.
I'm just telling you. You know, I'm sitting there watching, well, why are they cutting grass in, inside a riparian buffer? You shouldn't be doing that.
I think your ordinance says.
It's not the ordinance, it's DCNR.
Your riparian buffer ordinance talks about, uh, in its natural condition, so I guess the question would be, what was the natural condition? For example, on my lot, the natural condition of that area was grass. I can show you areas.
But you can't cut it, you're not allowed to cut it. I'm not, it's not about being grass.
It says maintain in its natural condition, and the natural condition at the time that the ordinance was approved.
I think you're gonna lose that battle with DCNR.
I think, I have a historical.
I just think you're gonna lose that battle with DCNR.
Well, we, we remove it every day.
Anyway, anyway.
Every week.
Uh, what are we gonna do here? What are we gonna do here?
Uh...
Let me mention that I, I think we have two issues here. One is the use of carcinite or fiberglass.
Or equal.
Or equal, which include.
And that's why I said in my application, I believe there was an error made in a way, it was written as fiberglass, and then in parentheses, carcinite or equal, close parentheses. I don't believe the parentheses, there's, what, what's the reason for the parentheses? I think that was a typo, it was a mistake, and that's what I indicated in my application. I think it should've said fiberglass, carcinite, or equal. Well, a steel stake, in my opinion, is, is just as good as any carcinite stake, and, and it's what most people use, because once it's in the ground, it's sturdy, and, and it'll stay there for, uh, the duration, which in this case, as Todd just said, is three years. So, so, uh, the, the, the thought there is, which I have in my second waiver request, is you're going to disturb an area, which you can disturb a riparian buffer zone area, regrade it, but you're gonna have a permit to do that from DEP, uh, through the Center County Conservation District, okay? So, the idea, I think, when the ordinance was written, was, okay, you gotta put signs up to delineate the riparian buffer zone, so nobody goes in there and does anything without a permit, but you put the signs up, but then after three years, the vegetation's established, and then the signs can go away. Well, right here, I don't know what they did in this particular area, this is between the parking lot they installed at Bull City and the drainage way, which runs next to a driveway that goes back through the property. Uh, but anyway, uh, if they did, I don't, I, I don't know if they, did they do grading in this area, Todd, do you know, or?
I don't believe they did anything.
But anyway, the ordinance required riparian buffer signs, or, so that's what they did. And this is, this is the way it is, this, these pictures were just taken within the last week.
Okay, so I, I'll say, um, again, though, I think the, the one issue comes down to a flexible sign.
Yeah.
Flexible marker versus a rigid steel marker. The other issue I see in here was the request for, um, fewer signs.
That's on the, that's on Spencer subdivision.
That's a different property.
Yeah, it's a different, that's a different project. We'll talk about it next.
The, the McGann subdivision's the one back on the wall behind you.
Okay, I, I was reading here in our request that none of the signs should be required, or as an alternative, reduce number of markers.
That's on the Spencer.
Reduce mark. Okay, okay, I, I see.
This, or, this project.
I see.
The Mc, I'll call it the McGann subdivision. There's three lots total, right there, there's three lots total. Martin's house is on Lot One R, then Lots Twelve and Thirteen can be sold, okay? And, and so, the point here is, Lot Twelve, we know there's a party interested in buying that, and they're probably gonna buy it soon. So the board knows, I'm getting back Lots Twelve and Thirteen, okay? So, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding there, so I'm gonna be the owner of Lots Twelve and Thirteen, and, and, uh, be selling Lots Twelve and Thirteen to a couple, and they're gonna build on Lot Twelve. So when they build on there, these signs will be in place. If this request is approved, I'll probably have the signs up in the next two weeks on Lot Twelve, okay? So, uh, because there's construction imminent, we'll put the signs up, and I think that will meet your ordinance requirements.
That, that's where the eighth issue comes in, too.
Yeah, eight, eight, eight signs, eight signs on that lot. All I'm requesting is, I'd be allowed to put up steel posts with riparian buffer signs on those posts to identify the riparian buffer area. So it's just using steel in lieu of car- uh, carcinite, but I believe the intent of the ordinance was to allow one to use different materials. Somebody could come in party and ask to use wood. Uh, I'm not doing that, because I think steel stakes are more sturdy, based on what I've seen, and what, uh, the Pennsylvania Fish Commission uses, and what you use on your signage in the town, along township roads. I, I, I'm not aware of any place, may, maybe you do use carcinite on occasion, but I think most townships opt for steel, because it's more sturdy and, uh, will, uh, last longer than a carcinite sign. Carcinite is, again, flexible, if you hit it or run over it, it'll s- bring back up, but as you can see from these signs, I don't know if the lawnmower hit this, hit them or, or whatever, but they're not vertical, and they haven't been in, I, I don't know, how long, a year?
No, it's, it's longer, it's getting close to three years.
Tom, can I say something?
Okay, yeah.
Having been the only person here that was on the original riparian.
Maybe Mr. Daley here is currently maintaining our properties. So, um, I think if, if you're concerned about carcinite versus steel, um, Fred, if you were maintaining this, uh, lot and a steel post, do you see any problem with damaging your equipment around those posts, or, okay? Would you be able to keep the perimeter of this riparian buffer, uh, properly maintained with your current equipment?
Yes.
So I think the, the main thing is that the signs are there to notify somebody that there is a border that runs through the area, whether it's on carcinite, or fiberglass, or steel, probably doesn't make a whole lot of difference for a three-year period, other than steel might remain more rigid over that time, and it's gonna cost less for the, for the gentleman doing the installation. But I think you have to recognize that if we were talking about a ten- or twenty-year period, there would probably be more discussion about what we should use, but I think in this particular case, if the steel posts, properly signed, can be maintained adequately with normal lawn maintenance equipment, we're not talking about getting a brush hog out there or anything like that, then I, I don't see really what the concern would be. They're gonna be in place, they're going to do their job notifying people, and the area will be able to maintain, maintain adequately.
What's the spacing between those signs, Tom?
Fifty feet.
Is that, uh, recommended in the?
That's in the ord-
We're not changing that spacing.
No, no, we're not changing that, that's what, that's what your ordinance recommends, but as I just said, when I went down to Fisherman's Paradise, their, their riparian buffer signs are a hundred feet or more, and, uh, but we're not asking for a waiver from the fifty-foot, it's, in this case, it's only eight signs, but we'd just like to be able to use steel posts rather than, uh, carcinite or fiberglass. We think they're more durable, will stand up straight, and, uh, Fred will be mowing around them and, and.
Steel is also recyclable.
Tommy?
And.
Speak, can you go to the microphone?
Yeah. This, this is something I'd mentioned, but I don't know if there's ever been discussed.
Steel is recyclable.
Better identify yourself.
My name is Tommy Songer, I am a township, uh, resident, also his son, but, uh, we were talking the other day, and, and steel's recyclable, all I'm gonna say is that, and the fact that these are freeable, if they get left alone, left in the area, they're gonna deteriorate over time and probably add contaminants to the streams you're looking to try to protect. Microplastics, we probably all heard about that, things of that nature that are polluting our waters and, and what have you. Steel wouldn't do that, they're much easily collected, and, uh, even if they are there for a long time, they'll tend to rust, and, uh, at least you can pick them up and recycle them.
The steel we would use would be powder-coated steel, so it's not gonna rust, and it's only, as, as we know, it only has to be there three years. Within three years, the house is gonna be built there, the lawn will be landscaped, and, and, uh, once the three years is up, the signs can, uh, go away. Uh, but, uh, as Tommy made a good point there, it's a recyclable material, and, uh, so that's a request, is be able to use steel posts rather than.
I've got another question, and I'm not sure it's related to the spacing on that, but on the, uh... Memo from Mark, it says Spencer subdivision was approved in January, we have explained to Tom that a new plan is required, but he is asking the board to.
That's a different plan. There's, there's two different properties that Tom sent emails regarding. This is the McGann property?
Well, number, number twelve, Lot Twelve.
Yeah, Lot Twelve. So then there's another property just above this, above Emma Court, heading south, that is the Spencer property, and Tom also is interested in talking about a potential waiver for that one. With that particular waiver request, we explained to Tom, because of its being very extensive, uh, they would need to give us a new plan. It's not just a simple request to change a material type.
Sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
It's confusing issue, we have two of them.
That's right.
I, I don't, I'm not opposed to the steel issue, I mean, to me, it's a, for three years is a reasonable request, but when you get into this kind of issue, the other one, I think we need to talk pretty in-depth. And I don't recall the discussion, how many years ago, we talked about the riparian?
Well, one of your husband. Mark? Well, let's have a motion.
Oh, uh, well, I don't know how to make it, but I'll make a motion that we approve the steel riparian buffer, uh, markers for, for, uh, McGann subdivision. uh, markers for, for, uh, McGann subdivision, for the eight of them. And I don't know, what, why do we have to reference that?
That's the ordinance.
That's the waiver that, uh.
Okay, so what, so I'll reference that eleven dash four point one four point four.
Did you, did you include the number eight in that request?
I did say eight. I did say the eight. I did say the eight.
Anybody would like to second that motion?
Would you, would you ask for a second?
Yeah. I just, sorry, well, Tracy, just, um, any further discussion?
I just, I have que- I have a question. Does anybody remember why, why the, um, fiberglass or carcinite was requested to be used instead of steel prior to this?
I think that was put in the agenda. There were several reasons why the carcinite, uh, or the equivalent was, uh, recommended because of its flexibility, its safety. In the case that Tom just described, if the construction vehicle backs into a steel sign, it's gonna go down, and it might be replaced, it might not, carcinite's gonna stand back up. It's, it's more flexible.
I had the original ordinance at home, so.
There is an issue, and if we would, if we would approve this, it would just move the precedent forward.
That's.
So a kind of a reset.
Uh, right. It'll eliminate that part of the ordinance in essence, because it'll, it'll set a precedent.
Well, effectively, yes.
It validates, yeah.
It'll set a precedent that anybody can use steel for riparian buffers.
Well, let me see that, Frank, if you look at that part of the ordinance, rewriting that part?
Depends on what your vote is, I guess.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay, call a question. All those in favor of the motion to allow steel, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No? We got three noes?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, folks.
What was the count?
Two to three.
Three to two approved?
No, two to three denied.
What, may I ask what the reason is?
For me, it's setting a precedent. It means anybody, everybody can now use steel. It essentially wipes out our ordinance.
No, it doesn't. It says order equal.
I don't, I don't see a steel as being equal to a flexible.
You may be fine, like, if somebody knocks down your sign or maybe putting it up again, but what about the next person? The next person, the next person. That's my question.
Huge situation should be treated differently, like Todd said earlier. I mean, he asked for a waiver. He didn't ask for a change of ordinance.
You're gonna speak. Can you get up? I think we should move on.
Alls I was saying is, he wasn't asking you to change the ordinance. He was asking for a waiver to the ordinance, and earlier Todd said, you know, different situations should be treated different. This doesn't go on to everybody saying that because Tom did it, they can do it.
Okay, let's move on.
Could, could I request that the Spencer subdivision discussion be moved to the next month?
Yeah.
Spencer, can you bring up the plan?
I believe Dennis just asked for it to be moved to next month. Is that correct?
Can we move that to next month, Tom?
It wasn't on the agenda.
Uh, yeah.
Not on.
So we've not received a plan from Mr. Songer. I think he was hoping to get some type of indication of whether or not you'd be willing to consider his request, but if you wanna move that to next month, we can, we can do that.
I prefer moving it to next month.
Yeah, like I said, I would, I would consider lowering the density, but not the material. Contract oh-one, two thousand twenty-five, outer drive paving project.
The two thousand twenty-five operating budget includes ninety-eight thousand dollars to pave outer drive from Harris Drive to a point approximately four hundred linear feet, uh, west of East Hubler Road. In addition to the contract bid, an alternate bid was also solicited for paving the remainder of outer drive to the college township boundary. Bids for this project were opened on June fifth at eleven a.m. The low base bid, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars, was submitted by Glenn O'Hallbaker Incorporated of State College. Staff is not recommending that the alternate bid be awarded. Paving, the remainder of outer drive will be included in the two thousand twenty-six budget. A bid tab and memo from the township engineer, uh, Tiben Zerbi, are included in the packet. Recommendations that you move to award contract oh-one, two thousand twenty-five, outer drive paving project to Glenn O'Hallbaker in the amount of sixty-seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move to award contract oh-one, two thousand twenty-five, outer paving project to Glenn O'Hallbaker in the amount of sixty-seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars.
A second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? Move, motion passes. Proposed ordinance three hundred and seventy-four, restricting parking on Jack's Mill Drive. We had a public hearing on this.
I'll move that motion. Approve, pub's ordinance three seventy-four, restricting parking on Jack's Mill Drive for the entirety of this street.
A second.
Okay, we have a second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? Motion passes. Proposed real estate donation.
Late last year, the township was approached by a property owner, Barbara Janowski, who was offering to donate four parcels of land to the township. Here, the parcels are adjacent to one another and abut state forced land. The other parcel is adjacent to privately owned properties. The parcels are wooded and contain no structures or other development. None of the parcels have access to a public or private street. All parcels are located in the natural areas zoning district. Uh, and then there's a list of the property tax parcel IDs in the, uh, agenda. Um, they are twelve point seven nine acres. There's one that's ten point four seven acres, one that's five acres, and one that is two acres. Property owner is offering to deed the parcels to the township without any restrictions on future use. Given their location and physical characteristics, if accepted, the, the properties would only be useful as township-owned open space. If the board is agreeable to accepting the proposed property donation, staff can work with the property owner's attorney to finalize and execute deeds to transfer the parcels to the township. Uh, the recommendation that this is a discussion item. If the board is agreeable to accepting the proposed property donation, um, the board should move to approve, move to accept the proposed donation of property from Barbara Janowski. And I will also note that it would be also a recommendation that, as a condition of that, any, uh, back taxes on the properties also be paid prior to transfer.
Okay.
My, my question is, with the lineage being nineteen fifty and nineteen fifty-five, and, and your comment is very unlikely that any heir will appear. Has our attorney given us any indication of how that might appear or not appear or disappear or something?
Um, it would really be a matter of if someone came forward to file a claim, which, in the case of these properties, some of them are, uh, only a half interest that the township would be receiving, but the other half interest, um, I, I think would be very unlikely that someone from the nineteen fifties would come forward and, and file a claim. But if they did, they would only be able to do so for the other half, and they would have to go through a lengthy process to basically eliminate all of their, uh, potential interests from other heirs, so.
And I'm here to also comment on.
Please, yeah, I'm, I was about to ask that.
It's one of the main reasons I'm here.
Not the other ones, but, um, I heard it's off of Academy Street. So it's up above. You guys all heard about the Yacht Club. And I think the properties are up there. They're just little slivers out across there. And I just wanted, I wasn't even thinking until you said, "Over the years, there's been problems on properties on Academy Street." When Bonnie and I bought our property thirty-five years ago, we thought our property was halfway up the mountain. We started looking into building. A surveyor got involved up there, not for us, and he found out our property was on down the mountain. And luckily, the person that owned the property that we owned decided to give it up for taxes. We paid him, but anyway, short story. We were right. So there are some problems up there. I'm doubting there are up there. But one of my questions is, which I guess you don't own it yet, but to think about what you plan on doing with that property. Because one thing, if you guys own it, there's not gonna be taxes paid on it anymore. From what I understand, you wouldn't pay taxes on it, so, and I know the taxes are, are minimal. But what good would that property be to the township? Um, obviously, you thought this property behind your building wasn't good for the township anymore. So you sold that, created some revenue to the township. That property up there, I'm sure, uh, adjacent landowners might be interested in buying it. The township might be interested in making some money off of it by having it timber managed, not clear-cut it. Maybe there's some timber value to it. But, you know, just things for you to think about, because I, I think you probably are gonna accept it as a donation. Um, but I'm looking at it as, it's no good for the township's property, because one thing, you probably can't get to it. Uh, uh, the, the road's not open to say, hey, we can open it up to the township to go up there, uh, the residents to do things. I don't think that could happen. So I just wanted to give you some ideas of the property and what could be done with it, and.
Being adjacent to the state forest, I would be interested in giving it to, giving it to the state forest.
Or even if it takes.
When we did the Globe Race Gap project, we gave, uh, about, I think, eighteen acres. And they built a parking lot and did all the improvements there. You can't do that on this one, but it's.
No, but it would add to, if state game lands is one of the adjacent areas, or maybe even if they're not, they would want it, and then sure, it would be open to hunting, you know, for anybody that could get to it, hiking, you know, whatever it might be, so, just some ideas, yeah.
I think our major issue is leaving it an open space.
Good.
Protect it. State game lands would do that?
I know. Well, they give up land too.
According to Mark, the two thousand twenty-five taxes for all those four parcels is four, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. That's without school tax?
That's just the municipal tax. I didn't throw in county or school tax, but that would be what the township would miss out on in terms of revenue.
But even if it is four hundred and some dollars, why not let somebody own it and pay that?
In total, the school tax, I would, would probably be dealing about two thousand total.
I think, yeah, it's probably about thirty-five hundred in total for all taxes, so.
Plus you would get that one lump sum of somebody writing you a check and buying the property that you don't need. I mean, that's just my, you know, I don't know what the township would do with that.
I mean, to me, it's open space protection, um, watershed protection, habitat protection.
And groundwater may be a partner in that.
Well, and that's what the person would do with it to got it, because you can't do anything else with it. It's on the, what do you call it, ridge overlay or whatever. You can't build a home up there. It's on, it's where the, it's where the mountain starts getting pretty steep.
Yeah, please.
I'm Chris Morrell, Harris Township resident, and I will say that, uh, I do see there being some potential use in, you know, way of easement or access. I know it's not all publicly accessible up there, but if we do have some sort of public access for the hikers and bikers, maybe not the bikers, because it is steep. I've been up on Bald Knob Bridge looking down, trying to find a good way down, and there's not really a good one. But if we're looking at property, I know, uh, there's a lot of people I know in the township that would really appreciate access, so if it is something where we get it and donate it to open land, having an easement, looking forward to maybe from the top of Academy, finding a way up to Bald Knob Bridge, I know that's definitely a lot of people that I'm friends with in the area would love to have that sort of access. So I do think, I don't think it's a completely useless parcel of land when we're talking about uses that the residents could actually take advantage of. So that's my, uh, my counterpoint to it being useless land, so.
You, I, I live on that road. There's a lot of access between that side, and I live there.
Well, again, that's what I think, if it becomes a concern.
Well, I'll make the motion that we accept the proposal donation of property from, or those specific lots, uh, from Barbara Janowski.
Second.
With the condition? We're gonna have the condition of.
With the taxes prepaid. Back taxes paid.
Good choice.
Yeah. We have a second. Any further discussions? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Access parking isn't for Tussie Pond Park.
Yeah, so Tussie Pond Park was dedicated to the township in two thousand.
Move to authorize the township manager to execute the proposed access and parking easement agreement with the Calvary Baptist Church of State College.
Second.
You're learning.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes.
Mark, we're getting to that phone right.
I know.
Okay.
Can I move to approve the use of the Bulbruck Fire Police on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, for traffic control for the Armond seventy point three, Pennsylvania Happy Valley Triathlon?
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Got a question for Tom. Is there a compensation involved in this, uh, issue?
I understand that they do make a donation to the fire company for their.
Per event or for the whole lump?
I'm not sure on how the donation's made. I, I, I haven't asked specifically, but my understanding is they do compensate the fire company for their time, uh, and make a donation.
I know, the same question on the next item.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you.
I move to approve the use of Bulbruck Fire Police for Linkfest events at Tussie Mountain on June nineteenth, June twenty-sixth, July third, July tenth, July seventeenth, July twenty-fourth, July thirty-first, and August seventh.
Second.
Discussion?
Is, is that at, uh, the three twenty-two intersection, or is that up at the parking lot section?
I think the police normally handle down at the three twenty-two intersection.
State College place.
Right, and the fire police are gonna be up handling the actual parking.
Three twenty-two is dangerous.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. We have a second, right?
Yeah.
Well, he did it. She did that. He did that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Resolution twenty-five dash ten, renewing the township manager's employment agreement through January fifth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Move the table list to next month.
Table indefinitely.
Why is it so funny?
Do it to me every year.
It's a tradition. It's a tradition.
That's not funny, Mark. So moved.
Okay. I write that. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you.
Mark was, he was laughing at that, weren't you?
I just smiled, because I expected it.
Okay, managers report.
I'll make this brief. The only thing I'm gonna bring up, two things. First is, I will be sending an email to all of you about the P M L Leadership Conference, October first through the fourth. I'm gonna try to get everybody booked ahead of time for the hotel if you're going, just so that we don't miss out on the hotel. You're going free?
I, yeah, I won, uh, at the P M L spring thing. I won.
Was that this year or was that last year?
No, it was just here this.
Oh, I, I wasn't at that, so I didn't know you went free.
I won the, I won the free, uh.
Well, I'll send out an email with the details. It's an Erie. Yeah, it's an Erie this year.
Send something out, like.
I will send it out. Uh, the only other item I'm gonna bring up, unless you have questions, was item number four, which is, over the last couple of years, some of the municipalities here in the region have been working together to develop a ban on single-use plastic bags. I was invited to go to a few of the meetings to see if, kind of, to see what was going on and to bring it back to you as a board, to see if you would be interested in being involved in that effort. There's a draft framework included that was put together by the working group. I'm just looking for feedback of whether or not you want me to continue to attend the meetings and bring this back as a potential item in the future, or if you're not interested.
What am I gonna put dog poop in? What am I gonna put dog poop in?
Well, here's the deal, okay? This is something that happened forty years ago. It was argued out. And what they found out is, all bags, paper, cloth, plastic, every one of them eventually ends up in the landfill. And they, so they did a study, and they stacked a hundred paper bags, because they don't deteriorate, there's no air down in that landfill. Hundred paper bags, hundred cloth bags, hundred plastic bags. They take up about that much in a landfill, where you got bags taking up this much and this much. So at the end of the day, leave it alone, because people use them for picking up their dog stuff. I use them for recycling, and I recycle other things. And by the way, plastic bags are the easiest thing in the world to recycle. Back in the day, when they first started the machines that made them, they would run them fifteen minutes every four hours, because they made so many bags. And then they would take the bags, and people could take as many as want, and then they would take them in the back and grind them up and run them through and run another fifteen minutes of them out. They are the easiest thing in the world to recycle, but nobody will take them, so they don't get recycled. I take mine into the, to the grocery store, put them in there, and they, they send them back to get recycled. So as far as eliminating, I think that's, if people wanna use them, let them use them. If they choose not to, make it a choice thing. We don't wanna mandatory it. I think we stay out of that business.
New, New York is, it disallows plastic?
That's a whole state.
That's, they're worried about microplastics. That's, wouldn't even make it down in it, not even a small.
Well, and that, plastic bags getting into your, that's harder to get into stuff than other things, in fact, that's causing it.
I do have one other item. Actually, the last item on here was, we did hold a mid-year work session, uh, last summer to talk about upcoming projects and issues. Wanted to see if the board's interested in having a similar work session this year. Uh, in particular, I do think, one of the things we'll need to talk about is what we're gonna do about local planning service. I don't know how much longer we'll have local planning beyond.
I don't know how much longer we'll have local planning beyond two thousand twenty-five. So, just something that, I wanted to see if you'd be interested in doing that again.
I would.
Okay, I can try to...
I think it was useful last time.
Yeah, so I'll try to schedule something for next month. Draw out some dates to all of you, see what works.
I think we could also maybe spend a little time on the short-term housing issues.
Absolutely. We have lunch. There you go.
Okay. Next item is approval of vouchers.
So moved, the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Cog committee reports. Our report, the executive committee met, no, they didn't meet. Did we have a meeting, class?
No, we didn't.
We didn't?
Nope.
No, the executive committee didn't meet. Parks, let me jump through here. Parks Governance Committee has met and is, is working on right now what the bylaws for the, for the authority should be, and particularly items about how they relate to the municipalities. One of the things that I think is gaining traction is to have a memorandum of understanding between the municipalities and the authority, have it standardized, but allow for codicils in the end, in particular to individual park requirements. Parks Capital, Parks Authority, I'll just report one thing there. We are a hair away from getting an occupancy for Whitehall Road.
Blimey.
Somebody asked me about that.
I did.
No, no, somebody...
Okay, Nigel?
Neither of my committees met.
Good one.
Yeah.
Okay. Danny? The solar power signatures are waiting, and we have something from Pam?
I'm signing.
Signing, good, okay. That's, I think, that's about seven or eight of those signs, so... And the land use is a continuation with the new planning director talking about the new comprehensive plan.
By the way, the solar power, did you notice they aren't going to be in Walker Township?
It was in the manager's...
Yeah, number one, I saw that.
Where's that?
The solar power thing, and guess what? We'll use up all the power trying to get it from Clarion down to here, that they're going to generate, so just like... I told you it was bad. Anyway, my turn? Finance didn't meet, we're going to meet this Thursday. State College, you're in connective, we got all updated last month on that. And MPO doesn't meet till the end of this month.
That went right along.